So, good morning, everybody. Welcome to the August 29th, 2023 meeting of the Calver County Board of Commissioners. At this time, I'd like to ask Reverend Rutledge if he would come forward to give us an invocation.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
If it is part of your piety, please bow your head for this morning's prayer. Gracious and loving God, this group gathers here today as representatives of the people of this county seeking guidance, wisdom, and understanding in the decisions that they are entrusted to make. In your boundless mercy, bless each member of this County Commissioners Assembly, that they may be instruments of your peace and stewards of the community they serve. Bestow upon them the spirit of collaboration that amidst their diverse viewpoints, they may find common ground and forge pathways that uplift and benefit all. May their discussions be tempered with respect, their disagreements with grace, and their decisions with fairness. Inspire them, oh Lord, to be mindful of the most vulnerable among us, to champion the cause of justice, and to prioritize the greater good over individual desires or interests. May they always be reminded that their ultimate responsibility is to the well-being of every citizen, to the health of the environment, and to the future they are shaping for generations to come. Bless this gathering, oh God, and may the work done here today echo your eternal love, justice, and mercy. In your holy name we pray, amen. Thank you for the opportunity.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Reverend Rutledge. And Reverend Rutledge comes to us today from All Saints Parish in Sunderland, right there at the 2-4 split.
He's been here since 1692.
Thank you. We appreciate that.
I have it.
Oh, I thought you were saying...
You look good.
Yeah, I see you look great.
Anti-aging cream.
If that's true, I need to start coming to your church.
Yeah, it's hitting them down. What time you open? They really need to hear.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you for coming in. With that, is there any additions or corrections to the agenda as presented?
I have none.
Hearing none.
Move to approve the agenda as submitted?
Second.
I have a motion, the second, to approve the agenda as presented. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. So, good morning, everybody. We've been on a little vacation for a couple of weeks, and sometimes it's hard to get back in the rhythm. But we do have some public service announcements this morning. Want to make sure everybody's aware that school's open yesterday, and so you have to be a little extra careful, especially in the mornings and evenings when the buses are out dropping off our precious cargo. I want to make sure that everybody remains safe in this upcoming school year. Also, September is emergency preparedness month. I think a little later, we're going to do a proclamation. But been seeing a lot of reports from weathermen, take this with a grain of salt, but they say we're going to have a very active September and October for hurricanes. And there's a little active out there right now, and apparently they're the one that's getting ready to hit Florida is not going to affect us. But just a little reminder that you need to get ready, especially those of you that live in low-lying areas where we have some flooding issues occasionally, and just be prepared in case your power goes out. Make sure you have batteries and your flashlights and a radio. And you can tune into our website and get updated information about weather conditions if there is something coming. So, we want to make sure everybody's prepared. And just want to remind everybody, we are going through the zoning ordinance update, and the public comment is open until Friday, September the first. And it's for three articles: critical area, marine and water-dependent facilities, and flood plain. So, if you can go to the website, you know, contact planning and zoning, get the most updated information. We really want everybody to be involved and engaged. It's the only way we can make good decisions is when we have everybody's input. So, we really do appreciate you participating in that process. And Labor Day is next week. Just want to make sure everybody has a safe and happy holiday. And I believe that ends all my public service announcements for today. Yes, it does. So, with that, we have a little ceremony for the sheriff's office this morning. We're going to swear in a new officer. Sheriff?
Morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, Sheriff Cox. I would just like to say thank you for letting us have this time with you this morning to carry on tradition to swear in one of our newest deputies. He's filling one of our vacant spots at the sheriff's office. But he hails from Patuxent High School, so he grew up here in Calver, played on the baseball team. And he got hired by St. Mary's County Sheriff's Office, been there two and a half years as a deputy. But as he wants to transition, we're bringing him back home. He's always wanted to work here, and I think he's going to do a fine job, actually, when we're doing the investigation part of it. St. Mary's had nothing but good things to say about him, and I think he's going to do a great job for us. But baseball coach said he threw a heck of a fastball at Patuxent High School, so as you can see.
What was top speed?
Eighty-nine.
Eighty-nine? Change-up? Ten off?
Right about.
There you go.
So, you're going to carry hardballs and not a weapon?
That's all we'll need.
If it's allowed. Right, but I think he's going to do great for us, and we're welcoming him here. And I would just say thank you.
Welcome to work.
Welcome.
Welcome.
Yeah.
Say, you want to come forward? And we have the mic here, so people will virtually can watch as well.
Morning, Madam Clerk.
Good morning.
Good morning.
How are you?
I'm good. How are you?
I'm good.
And I want to have you raise your right hand, and then repeat after me. Aye, and please state your name.
Aye, Tom Clancy.
Do promise or declare.
Do promise.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And that I will be faithful.
And I will be faithful.
And bear true allegiance to the State of Maryland.
And bear true allegiance to the State of Maryland.
And support the Constitution.
And support the Constitution.
And the laws thereof.
And the laws thereof.
And that I will.
And that I will.
To the best of my skill and judgment.
To the best of my skill and judgment.
Diligently and faithfully.
Diligently and faithfully.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Execute the office of Deputy Sheriff for Calver County.
Execute the office of Deputy Sheriff for Calver County.
According to the Constitution.
According to the Constitution.
And laws of the state.
And laws of the state.
And that I will not.
And that I will not.
For lucre or malice.
For lucre or malice.
Delay any person.
Delay any person.
Applying to me.
Applying to me.
For any business.
For any business.
Belonging to the office.
Belonging to the office.
And I officiate in.
And I officiate in.
And that I will not directly or indirectly.
And that I will not directly or indirectly.
Ask, take, exact, demand.
Ask, take, exact, demand.
Receive from or charge to.
Receive from or charge to.
Any such person.
Any such person.
To my own use.
To my own use.
Any fee or reward whatsoever.
Any fee or reward whatsoever.
For any services I may do.
For any services I may do.
As Deputy of said office.
As Deputy of Calver Sheriff's Office.
And making out the office fees.
And making out the office fees.
I will not wittingly or willingly.
I will not wittingly or willingly.
Charge other or higher fees.
Charge other or higher fees.
That are allowed by law.
That are allowed by law.
Congratulations.
Yeah.
So, we're working through his uniform right now, but we have his badge here, and welcome aboard, first badge of the Calver County Sheriff's Office. Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Don't we just sit down?
No one in here. No taxes for anybody.
Good seeing you guys. Thank you all. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Sheriff. Absolutely.
Congratulations, Sheriff.
Good seeing all you guys.
Did he have a uniform? What's up, man?
Good seeing you, man.
So, that brings us to proclamations, and we have several this morning. And first, we're going to do the Skills USA competitors. Commissioner Cox? Morning, Jim.
Good morning, Commissioners. Jim Murchison, Fire Rescue EMS Division Chief, Department of Public Safety. Just real quick, I wanted to thank you guys for your support for our Volunteer Appreciation Day on August 19th. It was really great seeing a lot of you there. The volunteers really appreciated it. It was great weather. I think we couldn't have had a better day. We're here to recognize three individuals for our CTA program. And I'm going to turn it over to our Recruitment and Retention Specialist, Erin Ward, to give you some more details on that.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
As Jim said, I'm Erin Ward, Recruitment and Retention Specialist, Fire Rescue EMS, Public Safety. The Calver County High School Recruitment Program began in 2003 as a one-year work-released school program for high school seniors and has continued to grow over the last 20 years. Through the cooperation and support of the Calver County Board of County Commissioners, Fire Rescue EMS, the Career and Technology Academy, our volunteers and state governments. This program is an opportunity for students who are interested in pursuing a career in fire rescue or emergency medical services field that provides hands-on experience, mentorship, education to cadets, preparing them for future roles in emergency services. Each year, these cadets have an opportunity to participate in the Skills USA Maryland Competition. During the 2023 Skills USA Maryland State Competition, three of our Calver County Fire Rescue EMS volunteers were medalists in this competition. Nicholas Boswell of Prince Frederick Volunteer Fire Department competed and earned a gold medal in firefighting competition, while Travis Winston and Caroline Robinson of Huntington Volunteer Fire Department competed as a team in the Emergency Medical Technician Competition, earning silver medals. This competition not only tested the technical skills of the participants, but also emphasized teamwork, professionalism, problem-solving, and critical thinking, preparing them for successful careers in these critical fields. Today, we would like to honor and celebrate the exceptional achievements of these dedicated and talented volunteers. We are joined by Chief Two, Willie Gray, from Prince Frederick Volunteer Fire Department, Deputy Chief of Fire and CTA Chairman, Michael Theroffel, CTA Principal Atkins, and CTA Vice Principal, Mr. CTA Instructor, Marquis Smith. Introduce yourself.
I'm Travis Winston, and I'm a member at Huntington Volunteer Fire Department and got to stay over in the state competition.
Come on, come on up.
I am Nick Boswell, and I'm a member of Prince Frederick Volunteer Fire Department.
I'm Caroline Robinson, and I'm a member of Huntington Volunteer Fire Department.
Willie Gray, Chief of Prince Frederick Fire Department.
Mike Theroffel, Deputy Chief of Fire at Huntington Volunteer Fire Department.
We'd also like for their families to come forward, if that's okay?
Absolutely.
So, I do see Principal and Vice Principal over here, CTA, if they would like to say a word about these three young volunteers?
Good morning. It's been an honor and pleasure to work with these students and to work in this partnership with all of these community partners, with public safety and with the members and departments. The mentorship that I know that the students receive through their service and the volunteer service is invaluable. And I know that each one of these young people, they truly are the best of the best that we have here in Calver County. They're tremendous young people, and I couldn't be more proud of them. So, congratulations.
Thank you. Come on up. Travis, come on up. And like they said, it's great to have volunteers, but when the volunteer goes above and beyond their duty, it's also great news to hear and see what they're doing for our community. So, I do have a proclamation reads like this. Whereas the Skills USA Maryland State Championship is an esteemed event where our students from across the state demonstrate exceptional occupation and leadership skills. The students of Calver County Public Schools Career and Technology Academy have constantly demonstrated their dedication, commitment, and passion for excellence in various fields. And whereas Nicholas Boswell of Prince Frederick Volunteer Fire Department, Travis Winston of Huntington, and Caroline Robinson of Huntington recently participated in a 50-annual Skills USA Maryland State Championship, representing Calver County with the utmost pride and professionalism. Nicholas and Travis and Caroline showcased their skills, knowledge, and expertise in firefighting, and Nicholas received a gold, Travis received a silver, and Caroline received a silver also. Whereas achievement not only reflects their remarkable talents, but also highlights it, unwavering support and guidance provided by his family, teachers, mentors, and Career and Technology Academy Fire Departments, and Calver County Fire Rescue EMS Division. And whereas their remarkable accomplishments have served as inspiration for his fellow students, encourage them to strive for excellence and pursue their passions and steadfast determination. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed by the Calver County Board of Commissioners that sincere congratulations and best wishes and continued success are hereby extended to Nicholas Boswell, Travis Winston, and Caroline Robinson for earning medals in the Skills USA Maryland State Championship. Be it further proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners urges all the members of our community to join in recognizing their remarkable talents, dedication, and commitment to excellency, given under this hands and seals this 28th day of August 2023, signed by all five Commissioners. Thank you for all you do for this community. Thank you.
One second.
Oh. We got a reading there, can see.
Thank you. Have a good day.
You know what?
So, the next proclamation is for Preparedness Month. Commissioner Riley?
Mr. Grayson, can you come forward, introduce yourself, and tell us about Emergency Preparedness Month, please?
Good morning, Commissioners. Mike Grayson, Emergency Management Division Chief and part-time weather announcer now and then. Yeah, we have some of our emergency management staff here with me today. I'd like them to come behind me and certainly introduce themselves. Thank you, first of all, for the plug, Commissioner, about what Preparedness Month is all about. I would like to remind, three years ago this month, Tropical Storm Isaias came through Calver County, and Calver took the brunt of that storm and the destruction that it left. We've got a lot of good people in a lot of departments that are still working on projects from that storm that came through three years ago, and not to take away from any of those folks. I do want to say that the ability for us to help recoup some of that money today is because of the people that you see behind me. Those are the folks that started that process, went out and did initial damage assessments, talked to a lot of people on the phone, heard a lot of stories, tried to help where they could, but filled out a lot of paperwork, asked a lot of questions, and made sure that we did the right thing so that we could be in position to go up through the state and up to FEMA to ask for assistance. So, again, just want to remind you that, again, they did a lot of work getting that process started. Very proud of them for what they did, and they continue to do, and we do continue to watch every day. We know about the hurricanes that are sitting out there now and continue to watch those and make sure that we let those who know the best that we can about any possibilities from those storms. So, I'll shut up and let them introduce themselves. Thank you.
Come forward. Come on up front.
Kim Goddard.
What do you do?
Too much to tell you. Daily keeping him straight.
Good morning, Commissioners. Kara Buckmaster, Emergency Management Specialist.
Stacy O'Donnell, Hazard Mitigation Specialist.
RJ Pope, Emergency Management Planning Specialist.
Good morning, Commissioners. Crystal Dowd, Deputy Director of Public Safety. I just wanted to recognize the hard work of each one of these individuals and how much that they care about this county and what they do every day.
Dave McDowd, Public Safety Director. What she just said.
And I'm going to say, I'm sorry, I thought you were coming up to introduce yourself as the photographer. No, but I want to say, we do have a lot of unsung heroes in the county, and here's some of them right here. Through FEMA, like I said, we get a lot of reimbursements for disasters, and without them, that would be impossible. And it looks like we might have an active hurricane season. Hopefully, we dodge all the bullets this year, as we have been fortunate. So, we'll see what happens there. Only Mother Nature can control that. It's totally out of our control, correct? Just keep us informed. That's all I ask. All right, I'm going to read the proclamation. Whereas, emergency preparedness is a shared responsibility of the entire nation. Every community, business, family, and individual has a role in planning and preparing for emergencies and disasters of all kinds. And whereas, National Preparedness Month is observed each September and provides an opportunity to highlight the important role of citizens as they prepare for emergencies in their homes, businesses, schools, and communities. This nationwide observance encourages all Americans to learn more ways to prepare for all types of emergencies, from natural disasters to potential terrorist attacks. And whereas, the United States Department of Homeland Security Federal Emergency Management Agency urges all Americans to observe National Preparedness Month by taking time to build an emergency supply kit, make a family emergency plan, be informed about different threats and their appropriate responses, and get involved in preparing their community. And whereas, Maryland recognizes the importance of preparing for potential emergencies and is proud to observe the month with appropriate events, preparedness, information, and activities. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed by the Board of Calver County Commissioners that the month of September 2023 be known as Calver County Preparedness Month. Be it further proclaimed that all citizens are urged to join with the Calver County Department of Public Safety, Division of Emergency Management, in carrying the message of preparedness to the community, given under our hands and seal this 29th day of August 2023, signed by all five.
Another job she's got to do. That's where Kim... They just put everything on you.
All right, smile.
Thank y'all for what you do.
Thank you.
We better hug her.
Have a good day.
Yes, sir, absolutely.
What do you do?
Everything I can do for you. Everything I can do for you.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Thank you. Kenny. Hi, thank you.
So, the next proclamation we have is a very sad event. I think we should be flying the flags at half-staff today, but go ahead, Commissioner Hart.
So, Ms. Jenny, we have your retirement here, and I'm sure there's some people here to speak before I get going. Is that accurate?
We'll be here all day.
Yeah.
We have a party to get to.
Yes, we do. So, Jenny has some family here, so maybe they want to join her.
Please, please come on over.
Husband and her mother. It's a bittersweet day for planning and zoning. I know no other county employee more passionate, more full of pride, more having a love of the county. Jenny put her heart and soul into everything that she did for us, and I can't accurately thank her. There aren't enough words to say how much I've enjoyed working with you, how much we're going to miss you. We are going to call you, but when you're back in service, because we know you're going to be, I'll just service for a while. And I was trying to think of something that I could share to show everyone how much the county means to Jenny, and if you didn't know, every year on Halloween, she dresses up as Lord Calvert. There you go.
Did not know that.
Yes. So, again, thank you, Jenny, and anyone that wants to join us at the Harriet Brown Community Center this afternoon from 2:00 to 4:30 will be there celebrating Jenny. So, thank you, Jenny.
No, go ahead, sir.
You got one?
Hi.
Hello.
Good morning. I'm Jessica Otano, Planner 3 with the Department of Planning and Zoning. I had no intention of speaking today, but one of my goals from my supervisor, Jenny, is to speak publicly. Or...
Good job, Jen.
I'm sure she'll pass that along to my new supervisor. Shameless plug. So, here goes. Jenny, it's truly been an honor to work beside you these past few years. I started as Planner 1, I'm now Planner 3, and I attribute a lot of that to learning and growing with you. I've learned so much, and you've allowed me to lean on you for advice and guidance. Your passion for planning and service to this community resonates in everything that you do. You're warm and welcoming, but you're also strong and professional. Everyone needs a Jenny in their organization, but good luck trying to find one. Although I haven't had nearly enough time, or as long as I would like to work with you, and trust me, I've tried to get her to stay. I've begged, I've groveled, I pleaded, I've cried a little bit. I feel lucky for the time that I have been given to work with you. So, congratulations. We hope you have a wonderful couple of months in retirement, and we'll see you back in a few. Thank you.
Two months, that's all you get. You're great. No, two.
All right, if that's everybody, so this whole weekend, I've sat there and said, you know, what do I say? You know, I've read a lot of these in my eight-year career here, but I didn't want to mess it up. I said, you know, this is a one-time shot, and I mean this all sincerity, Jenny. It's like, I'm talking to Mark this morning, and I'm like, I don't know what to say, you know?
He was scared.
Yeah. What do you say to someone that every day comes prepared, every day researches everything? You turn on a meeting at night, there she is again. I'm telling Caroline, I'm like, does she go home? That's my wife. Caroline watches, I'm like, does she ever go home? She's always there. The knowledge is off the chain, but the bigger word I just kept coming back to was respect, Jenny. You respect everyone you work with, the public, this land here. She loves nature, this environment, she embraces it. I mean, and I'm going, what do I, how do I explain to you how valuable she's been to me, to the people here? And I just, you know, and I'm a lost words. I said to Mark, I said, give me something. There's got to be something. I don't think the word "snow" works, so he told me that story. I said, yeah, yeah, that is a funny one I'll talk to you about later, but that was a great story. And, you know, it's just, boy, I say it all the time, you know, always worry for the county, you know? As some of the great people go, the knowledge that goes with you, you know, and I know you will get phone calls, you know? It's just humbling. I'm truly, to base of my core, honored to be here with you today, Jenny. I mean that with all sincerity. It's humbling, and I just, I don't know, and I'm so sorry. I said, I mean, I got to come up, you know, Steve Williams was great. He would come up with something, you know, and, you know, but I had to write a few things down, but I'm going to keep it brief. Okay, you know, I like to talk. I just have just a couple, couple things, but I had to write it down because I couldn't keep it together, so I just have a few. Just a couple. Just a couple.
Hear ye, hear ye, hear ye.
Just a couple of words here. I'll be brief.
Now, therefore, be it...
Let Jenny read it, she'll do a better job.
Oh, there's no doubt. Whereas, Jenny Plummer Welker is retiring on September 8, 2023, after dedicating over 29 years of exemplary faithful and loyal service to the citizens of Calver County and the state of Maryland. Jenny's illustrious career with Calver County government began on January 24, 1994. As a Planner 1 with the Department of Planning and Zoning, thereafter, she was promoted to Planner 2 in 2003, Principal Planner in 2007, and on July 28, 2014, Jenny was promoted to the new long-range planner position, where she is serving until her retirement. Jenny was instrumental in overseeing the process, which led to the development and adoption of many of the county's most important and long-range plans, including the Calver County Comprehensive Plan Updates, Land Preservation, Parks, Recreation Plan, Town Center Master Plans. In doing so, will forever left her imprint on Calver County and its citizens. Whereas, Jenny has worked with the Town Center Architectural Review Committee, Agricultural Preservation Advisory Board, Board of Appeals, Historic District Commission, Planning Commission. Jenny provided her professional planning expertise to many adopted boards and committees that ultimately led to the creation of new regulations that have improved the quality of life in Calver County, including the Outdoor Lighting Task Force, the Calver County Sign Regulations. That was a mess when I came on. Boy, I remember that. Boy, what a mess. That, here we go. Lost my place here. There we go, and boom, okay. And update the ad hoc committee, the Housing for All Task Force, Joint Agricultural Development Community Discussion on Transferal Developmental Rights. She has coordinated the Calver County Consensus Complete Count Committee for 2000, 2010, 2020, census, and represented the county on Southern Maryland Heritage Area Consortium, and... Whereas, among Jenny's more noteworthy projects included the coordination of the, I'm going guessing, Filey?
Filey.
Ah-ha, look at that. Okay, I was between that and the other. Filey and Calver County Accord, an agreement that was signed by the Town Mayor of Filey, which, as Mark told me today, is our sister county in England, right?
He's close. It's a sister town.
Ah, see? See what I mean? He's close.
I'm going to address being corrected a little bit later.
An agreement that was signed by the Town Mayor of Filey, Calver County's sister county located on the North Sea in North Yorkshire, England, and the President of the Board of County Commissioners. Jenny also played a vital role in the 350th Anniversary Celebration of the Founding of Calver County in June 2004, including the preparation and burial of the Time Capsule, which is to be opened on the county's 450th anniversary. How cool is that? Whereas, Jenny has consistently demonstrated the highest standards of professionalism in her role as a planner. Her excellent work and contributions to the county have been recognized on many occasions by the Board of County Commissioners as Employee of the Month for June 99, September 2000, and June 2021. Must have been a three-time limit because you got it a whole lot more than that. It was recently presented, the Calver County Pride and Quality Award on August 1, 2023. During her tenure with Calver County, Jenny had really served six planning and zoning directors. How challenging is that, right? I've been here for three of them. Oh, no, sorry.
Courthouse closes at 4:30.
Yeah, now, right? And nine boards of county commissioners. My goodness, she earned a medal just for that. And participated in countless Calver County Planning Commission meetings, public hearings, and community outreach forums. Whereas, the Board of County Commissioners of Calver County presents this proclamation as a tribute to Jenny's outstanding accomplishments, selfless dedication, and hard work during her distinguished career, thereby recognizing this remarkable employee who has devoted herself to improving the quality of life for all Calver County citizens. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Calver County that the appreciation of all Calver County citizens is hereby extended to Jenny Plummer Welker on her retirement after 29 years of distinguished, exceptional, reliable, excellent, and commendable public service. Be it further proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners of Calver County join the community's Jenny's coworkers, family, friends, in conveying our collective gratitude for her service, and best wishes for a long, healthy, and happy retirement with continued success in all her future endeavors, given under our hands and seal this 29th day of
Ladies and gentlemen, while the Commissioners are moving out front, Mark Willis County Administrator, so I was lucky enough as the Director of Planning and Zoning to have, let me say, school was in session every day, and if I've surrounded myself with people smarter than me because I'm always a student, well, Jenny made that perfectly clear from day one, and she just followed up with it today. She is a wealth of knowledge that, you know, we will miss, obviously. Tay, who is going to be her replacement, and Tay knows what she's up against, Tay's very talented herself, but I will say that if you wore a number in Calver County government, we would retire it today. Thank you, Jenny. And is it true that you plan to be back for the opening of the capsule?
The Commissioners and for the Time Capsule decided to do a 50-year, I think I might be able to do a 50-year, but the 100-year, I'm not sure. But, just so everybody knows, everybody here today, there is a Time Capsule buried in the front yard of the courthouse. There is a bronze plaque out front, over top of it, and Kirsty so kindly, our former Historic Preservation Specialist, got the GPS units, and there's a bronze plaque as you exit the courthouse, on your right-hand side, a bronze plaque that tells you when and where to open it and find it. And it was supposed to be a movie prop.
Kenny's been a really absolute...
Thank you.
Good luck.
Here only have two months. I have two months.
We'll give you the three. Thank you. Folks, we give one more round of applause, please.
Three months. All right.
Two months.
Two months.
Two months. Yeah, we'll see about it. You scroll.
Thank you.
We'll see you at Halloween.
And the latest Proclamations for Retirement. Commissioner Brasso.
Can we have Mr. Lamour, please? Am I saying your name correctly?
That's correct, yes.
Oh, wonderful. Mr. Lamour has served 22 years on Huntington's Architectural Review Committee. Do you want to say a few words?
Well, when my wife and I first came here, this was our ideal community. Wanted to be part of it, wanted to do what we could do, but of course, this has changed now, and I, my wife passed away in February, so I probably will be leaving the county, but it's been a wonderful experience, and we both loved it greatly.
Please come up. You've been an asset to the county. Thank you.
If I may add, we have another Architecture Review Committee member here with Mr. Lamour, and one who was not able to come, and I'd like to read Frank Arbusto's words, if I may first. He was quiet and thoughtful, always polite, and waiting for others to present their views before he would add his own comments. If you're willing to listen, you can learn a lot from someone older than you. Tom was patient and looked at those projects for committee review from a different perspective. There's no doubt in my mind that our Huntington Architecture Review Committee was far better for having him as a member of our team. So, that's Frank Arbusto, and Mary Butler Jenkins is in the audience, so thank you.
Thank you. Would you like to come up? Hi, good to see you. Okay, I'm going to read the proclamation. Whereas, as specified in the Huntington Master Plan and Zoning Ordinance, the Board of County Commissioners appoints members to the Huntington Architectural Review Committee, whose goal is to ensure proposed new buildings, additions, remodeling, signs, and all else relating to the outward appearance of structures within the Town Center comply with the Huntington Town Center Master Plan and Zoning Ordinance. And whereas, Mr. Thomas Lamour was appointed to the committee on April 10, 2001, and served on the committee until May 17, 2023. Mr. Lamour lives in Huntington and has always shown compassion and dedication to the appearance of Calver County and the Huntington Town Center. His attention to detail, understanding of the development process, politeness, sense of optimism, and warm-heartedness made him an asset to the committee, and whereas, Mr. Lamour's knowledge of the Huntington Zoning Ordinance Regulations was instrumental in the informed and orderly development of the Huntington Town Center. The committee reviews applications and drawings, conducts public meetings, and discusses proposals. His ability to listen and summarize each participant's position assured committee members and applicants that the review process was fair and equitable. His commitment to meeting both the spirit and the letter of the Huntington Appearance Code while being mindful of economic realities played a very significant role in ensuring the legitimacy of architectural review, and whereas, the Board of County Commissioners of Calver County presents this proclamation as a permanent record of Calver County, establishing a perpetual tribute to Mr. Lamour, recognizing the commendable accomplishments made during his distinguished 22 years of service as a member of the committee and his efforts to improve the quality of life for Calver County citizens. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of Calver County that the appreciation of all Calver Countians is hereby extended to Thomas Lamour for his many years of outstanding service to local government. Be it further resolved that the Board of County Commissioners of Calver County join with Mr. Lamour's family, friends, and fellow citizens in extending best wishes for continued success in all his future endeavors, given under our hands and seal this 29th day of 2023, signed by all five county commissioners.
I have a motion and a second that we reappoint Dr. Alexander, Danielle Rowe, and appoint Myra Cunningham, Tracy Dolan Watkins. Oh, man, and...
Natalie Thorne.
Natalie Thorne to the Social Services Advisory Board, I'm sorry. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries.
Next up, you have the Fire and Rescue Commission, and staff is recommending that you reappoint Ashley Bless, as well as appoint Dave McDowell as the Public Safety Representative.
I move that we reappoint Ashley Bless and appoint Dave McDowell as Public Safety Representative.
Second.
I have a motion and a second that we reappoint Ashley Bless and appoint Dave McDowell as the Public Safety Representative. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
And then last appointment is going to be for the Building Board of Calvert County, and staff is recommending that you reappoint Thomas Reniker and appoint Donald Dembrow. Following that appointment, you'll have no vacancies.
Move to approve.
I have a motion and a second that we reappoint Thomas Reniker and appoint Donald Dembrow. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
That brings us to consent. We have several items under consent today. Item one, Department of Public Safety, Huntington Volunteer Fire Department Rescue Squad Apparatus Grant, C4 Command 6. Item two, Department of Planning and Zoning, Maryland Department of Emergency Management Sub-Award Agreement. Item three, Department of Finance and Budget Award Recommendation, RFP 2023-041 Surveying Services. Item four, Department of Finance and Budget Fiscal Year 2024 Police Recruitment and Retention Grant Award and Budget Amendment. Are there any objections to those items listed under consent?
I have none.
No.
Hearing none, those items will be adopted as presented. That brings us to new business. Item one, under new business, Department of Finance and Budget Forward Funding Memo. Director Miller? Come on up, have a seat. Morning, Veronica.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Long time no see.
It's been a while.
It's been a while.
It has, it has. I figured you guys needed a break.
Been gone a second. You didn't give her any AC, did you? I just stepped out the room.
Yes, they did, they did.
Oh, no.
Twenty million dollars.
Yep.
It, you should have stayed in the... Soon as you see my name on there, stay in your seat.
Air conditioning's coming.
Commissioners, I'm going to read to you the memo for the resolution to forward fund. There are several projects in the fiscal year FY 2024 capital budget that will be funded through the sale of general obligation bonds. We plan to issue bonds in the fall of 2023. The Maryland Department of Environment, MDE, loans will be reimbursed once the county prepares to start construction of those projects. In the event that funds are expended for the below projects prior to the bond sale or loan closing, a resolution of intent to reimburse is required to reimburse the general fund once the bonds have been sold or the loan has been settled. Discussion. There are several projects in the FY 2024 capital budget that will be funded through the sale of general obligation bonds. You see below in Table 1. There are 73 projects. They total 1,000,000...
We wish.
161... I know, sorry.
You made my heart flutter.
Oh, sorry. 161,745,17,000. All of these projects, doesn't mean necessarily that we're going to be selling bonds for each one of these projects. These are projects that have adopted bonding. As the projects move forward and we do expend money, then we do sell bonds to replace the money of ours that we put out to cover the project. Do you need me to read all 70?
I don't believe so.
No.
Someone wants to see them, they're in the record.
Very much appreciated. Conclusion, well, the fiscal impact, as described above. Conclusion recommendation, the Department of Finance and Budget is requesting the Board of County Commissioners review, and if appropriate, sign the attached resolution, which indicates the intent to reimburse the county for expenditures on specific projects that will be funded by the future sale of general obligation bonds.
Any questions?
Is that quick and easy? Feel like I just sat here for a second.
161 million ain't what it used to be.
No, it's not. Unfortunately, it's not.
But, this is just a list of projects, doesn't mean we're actually going to do all these projects, but it's a list of projects, and we're just authorizing today the sale of bonds if and when we do those projects.
Correct.
Just so everybody understands what we're doing today, and we're not approving spending 161 million dollars today.
No, we are not.
It's just an authorization, so, Mike's heart done fluttered.
Yeah, if you calm down a little, we're not going to spend that much on HVAC, I promise.
There's a few HVAC in there.
Yes, there are some, but they're not 161 million dollars.
It's just a credit card that never gets paid off, you know?
Yep. Well, we keep building, we're growing, so...
It's just, you know, what gets frustrating is nothing lasts, you know? I mean, and it's just days of building something, and it was there forever, it's just every time you turn around, you know, it's, um, nothing's built to last.
Yeah, but a lot of these HVAC systems, especially in the schools, were replaced, they're 50 years old.
Yes.
So, you know, you really can't complain when they last 40 or 50 years. I mean, eventually, stuff's going to wear out.
Correct, and I mean, you know, the schools have done an amazing job on upkeep and for their equipment.
And I give it a hard time, but they were all built one year without, you know, so it's like they start going like dominoes, you know? One in 80, now the next one in 81, I mean, you know, it's just, um, I think, and you know, you've heard my frustration, my biggest frustration is the study. Wow, to come out, study it, millions of dollars, design.
Design.
I mean, it's like if you came to me, your car, your car was broke, well, you know, I'm not going to fix it, but I'm just going to tell you what it costs to fix it, and then you make a decision, and now write me a check. It's like, no, how about you fix it?
Right.
You know, I mean, um, I don't, you know, but...
Usually, the studying the design costs as much as the actual project.
No, you're right. It has gotten ridiculous.
What's so frustrating?
No, you're correct, but the design, the HVAC systems themselves have gotten a lot more sophisticated, so...
They have. I think where I get frustrated is does ductwork get more sophisticated though?
No, but the actual unit that pushes the air through.
That, right, that.
We do have to measure the ductwork because we have to make sure that it's not too big or too small so that the air does flow properly into those places.
I guess.
You do, it's important.
I guess. I don't know. Kind of figure, it looks like this big gray tube that air blows through to me, but, uh, you know, yeah.
Just generally speaking, I think these projects, we're not going to read through them all, but they range from schools to the courthouse to water and sewer issues to senior centers, it's all across the board, and it's not just one thing.
Right, it's everything, correct.
It's a wide range of projects. And again, as Commissioner Hans said, it is available. I'm not trying to hide anything. Everything is spelled out.
Correct, I captured everything that had adopted bonding. At any time, any of these projects could move forward, or some of them do get delayed for other reasons, maybe a design takes a little longer than anticipated. We're starting our county administration building, we have some trailers over there, so that will probably be some of the bonds that we do sell.
Sure.
It's why we always write capital projects in pencil.
Yeah.
So we can erase them. Sometimes completely, sometimes we just move them.
I will be curious on this bond sale, what those rates look like, because since I've been here, rates have never been this high, you know, and in the past, you know, there was competition, remember, we had one sale where they actually bought some of it down, remember that, in the competition, because, you know, we did have such a good rating, or do have such a good rating, and the competition, you know, was there, but I don't know, um, I don't know, it's going to be curious.
Yeah, I, tough without crystal ball to figure out what it's going to be, but I don't expect a whole lot of movement between now and then.
I don't either. In fact, I think rates go up, and the forecast I'm hearing is January.
January, right, so, then that gets into the argument, do we fund a little bit more now for the interest rates to down, or if the long-term yield curve is coming down, do we hold off and wait? You know, it's, it's a gamble.
And then you're coming into an election year, that makes it unstable, you know? Wall Street doesn't like, you know, not knowing.
Exactly.
So...
Uncertainty raises it a few basis points.
Yep.
Any other questions?
None.
Ready for a motion?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I move to approve and adopt the resolution reflecting an intent to reimburse the county for expenditures on specific projects that will be funded by the future sale of general obligation bonds.
Second. I have a motion and a second to adopt the resolution, any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, next item on the agenda is Department of Parks and Recreation, Chesapeake Hills Golf Course Clubhouse Vendor Program and Fees. Shouldn't we open a clubhouse first?
Right.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning, Director.
Shannon Zoll, Director of Parks and Recreation.
Good morning, Kirsten Perry, Special Facilities Division Chief.
Good morning.
Morning.
All right, so I'll go ahead and read this memo, and it has nothing to do with HVAC.
There we go.
Don't deflect. It has everything to do about windows.
So, subject, Chesapeake Hills Golf Course Clubhouse Rental Package Fee Schedule and Vendor Agreement. Background, the Department of Parks and Recreation collects revenues and fees for many programs and facilities throughout Calvert County. This includes everything from summer camp, swim lessons, camping reservations, daily admission, food sales, and more. CCPR formalized the collection of these fees through the creation of a policy and manual to guide collection, analysis, refunds, waivers, grants, donations, and scholarship programs. The policy and manual were adopted by the Board of County Commissioners on October 29, 2019, and are consistent with Chapter 82 of Calvert County Code. Each year, CCPR is required to bring forward an annual fee schedule to the Board of County Commissioners for adoption. On December 13, 2022, the Board of County Commissioners adopted the calendar year 2023 fee schedule, and on July 11, 2023, adopted the calendar year 2024 fee schedule. Discussion. Chesapeake Hills Golf Course is scheduled for completion, the clubhouse is for completion this calendar year, and will contain a rental facility that patrons can use for events. The recommended rental package fees for this clubhouse were approved in the 2024 fee schedule, however, have not been added, not yet been added to 2023. Furthermore, Parks and Recreation is recommending a vendor advertising fee along with a vendor agreement that will allow vendors to be advertised to potential renters. Through this agreement, approved vendors gain access to advertise their business by their information being distributed to patrons seeking to book the facilities. An advertising fee is applied if a vendor wishes to be advertised in this manner. A fee is not applied if a vendor only wishes to be vetted through the county's approved procurement procedures. These fees are compatible with surrounding venues but affordable enough to ensure Calvert County residents and visitors may enjoy the facility and services that the new clubhouse can provide. Fiscal impact, the fiscal impact will vary year to year, however, by adopting the rental package and advertisement fees, Parks and Recreation has the ability to offset operating costs and increase revenue at Calvert, Chesapeake Hills Golf Course. Conclusion, recommendation, Parks and Recreation is requesting Board of County Commissioners review, and if appropriate, approve and adopt the resolutions setting the rental package for the Chesapeake Hills Golf Course Clubhouse and advertising fees. Additionally, it is recommended that the Board of County Commissioners review, and if appropriate, approve the vendor agreement template and authorize the Director of Calvert County Parks and Recreation to sign on behalf of the Board. We'll answer any questions you may have.
So, in a nutshell, what we're doing is setting the fees for when people come in to do events.
So, the fees for the rental package fees, they were already approved in the calendar year 2024 fee schedule, which begins in January of 2024, but as we expect to open the clubhouse in calendar year 2023, this year, we also need to add that to the 2023 fee schedule. The other fees that are associated with this are for the vendor agreement, which would need to be added to both years' fee schedule.
So, the vendors, some of the vendors you're talking about, so if I rented the hall, and I wanted to bring in a caterer, your intention is to provide a list of caters that you've verified...
That we vetted, they are insured, they have gone through the...
I can't just bring in Joe Smith, my neighbor, to cook hot dogs or whatever, I have to use an approved vendor on your list.
They, they would need to use an approved vendor. Now, that doesn't mean that any vendor that my neighbor that has their business doing that sort of thing, that they couldn't be an approved vendor.
But they'd have to go through the process.
They would have to go through the process, yes.
I just can't bring them in that day.
That would be correct.
Right.
And that's standard business.
Yes, that is. Most rental halls do that, make sure that they have reputable business liability.
Yes, yes.
Have any fire events planned?
Not at this time.
Better not.
We could have, but unfortunately, it didn't happen.
This project has gotten dragged a little bit.
We're, we're working as quickly as we can with the contractor and Department of Public Works to, to get the clubhouse open as soon as possible.
Isn't it funny how, you know, a few years ago, you know, I got all this pushback about, oh, you can't open up this venue, there's no need, blah, blah, blah. How fast will it be booked off?
As soon as we, I mean, we're already getting calls from folks that are looking to reserve the facility.
Yep, and I'm going to keep it very vague what was said to me back then, but it's so funny how all that worry and precaution, and now that doesn't even exist anymore, you know? So, this was the right project then, it's the right project now, you know, so...
It's definitely needed in the county.
Any other discussion?
I have a motion for you.
Yes, sir.
I move that we approve and adopt the resolutions setting for the Chesapeake Hills Golf Course Clubhouse Rental Package and Advertising Fees, and approve the vendor agreement template and authorize the Director of Parks and Recreation to sign these agreements on behalf of the Board.
That motion, the second that we approve and adopt the resolution, any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Hartz looking forward to cutting that ribbon.
Boy, you know it.
On December thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-two, the Board of County Commissioners adopted the calendar year, uh, two thousand and twenty-three fee schedule and on July eleventh, two thousand and twenty-three, adopted the calendar year, two thousand and twenty-four fee schedule. Discussion, Chesapeake Hills Golf Course is scheduled for completion, the clubhouse is for completion this calendar year and will contain a rental facility that patrons can use for events. The recommended rental package fees for this clubhouse were approved in the two thousand and twenty-four fee schedule, however, have not been added, not yet been added to two thousand and twenty-three. Furthermore, Parks and Recreation is recommending a vendor advertising fee along with a vendor agreement that will allow vendors to be advertised to potential renters. Through this agreement, approved vendors gain access to advertise their business by their information being distributed to patrons seeking to book the facilities. An advertising fee is applied if a vendor wishes to be advertised in this manner. A fee doesn't, a fee is not applied if a vendor only wishes to be vetted, vetted through the county's approved procurement procedures. These fees are compatible with surrounding venues but affordable enough to ensure Calvert County residents and visitors may enjoy the facility and services that the new clubhouse can provide. Fiscal impact, the fiscal impact will vary year to year, however, by adopting the rental package and advertisement fees, Parks and Recreation has the ability to offset operating costs and increase revenue at Calvert, uh, Chesapeake Hills Golf Course. Conclusion, recommendation, Parks and Recreation is requesting Board of County Commissioners review and if appropriate, approve and adopt the resolutions setting the rental package for the Chesapeake Hills Golf Course Clubhouse and advertising fees. Additionally, it is recommended that the Board of County Commissioners review and if appropriate, approve the vendor agreement template and authorize the Director of Calvert County Parks and Recreation to sign on behalf of the Board. We'll answer any questions you may have.
So in a nutshell, what we're doing is setting the fees for when people come in to do events.
So the fees for the, the rental package fees, they were already approved in the calendar year, two thousand and twenty-four fee schedule, which begins in January of two thousand and twenty-four, but as we expect to open the clubhouse in calendar year, two thousand and twenty-three, this year, we also need to add that to the two thousand and twenty-three fee schedule. The other fees that are associated with this are for the vendor agreement, uh, which would need to be added to both years' fee schedule.
So the vendors, some of the vendors you're talking about, so if I rented the hall and I wanted to bring in a caterer, your intention is to provide a list of caters that you've.
That we vetted, they are insured.
I can't just bring in Joe Smith, my neighbor, to cook hot dogs or whatever, I have to use an approved vendor on your list.
They, they would need to use an approved vendor. Now, that doesn't mean that any vendor that my neighbor that has their business doing that sort of thing, that they couldn't be an approved vendor.
But they'd have to go through the process.
They would have to go through the process, yes.
I just can't bring them in that day.
That would be correct.
Right.
And that's standard business.
Yes, that is, most rental halls do that, make sure that they have reputable business.
Responsibility.
Yes, yes.
Have any fire events planned?
Not at this time.
Better not.
We could have, but unfortunately, it didn't happen.
This project has gotten dragged a little bit.
We're, we're working as quickly as we can with the contractor, um, and Department of Public Works to, to get the clubhouse open as soon as possible.
Isn't it funny how, you know, a few years ago, you know, I got all this pushback about, oh, you can't open up this venue, there's no need, blah, blah, blah. How fast will it be booked off?
As, as soon as we, I mean, we're already getting calls, uh, from folks that are looking to reserve the facility.
Yep, and I'm gonna keep it very vague what was said to me back then, but um, it's so funny how all that worry and precaution and now that doesn't even exist anymore, you know, so this was the right project then, it's a right project now, you know, so.
It's definitely needed in the county.
Any other discussion?
I have a motion for you.
Yes, sir.
I move that we approve and adopt the resolutions said, setting for the Chesapeake Hills Golf Course Clubhouse Rental Package and Advertising Fees and approve the vendor agreement template and authorize the Director of Parks and Recreation to sign these agreements on behalf of the Board.
Second.
A motion, the second that we approve and adopt the resolution, any discussion on that motion, hearing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you Commissioners.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Hart's looking forward to cutting that ribbon.
Boy, you know it.
I am too.
Next item on the new business, item three, Department of Community Resources Budget Amendment for the North Beach Senior Center Sprinkler System.
Yes.
Good morning Director.
Good morning.
Morning.
Who are you?
Jennifer Mortland, Director of Community Resources. To give you some background, in July, two thousand and twenty-three, a rupture in the dry sprinkler system on the second floor of the North Beach Senior Center resulted in a breach that caused flooding on the lower level. During the cleanup process, the Department of Public Works Buildings and Grounds Division staff discovered the pipe was severely corroded and at risk of causing additional flooding. To avoid further damage, Buildings and Grounds proposed replacing the entire dry system with a higher quality galvanized pipe. Discussion, the first floor system is operating at full capacity while the second floor system has been deactivated. The installation of the new piping and necessary repairs to the walls and ceiling is expected to be completed within a span of four to six weeks. Throughout this period, access to the second floor will be restricted for senior participants, yet the first floor will continue to remain accessible. Buildings and Grounds has received two quotes that project a total cost for new pipe installation of thirty-one thousand, three eighty-four, twenty-five, um, and drywall ceiling repairs totaling twenty-four thousand, seven sixty-eight, forty. There is existing county funding in the Calvert Pine Senior Center Expansion and Renovation Budget that can be transferred to cover this emergent, emergency expense as we are phasing that project. Fiscal impact, there is no fiscal impact because this is a transfer from one project to another. Conclusion, recommendation, Department of Community Resources is requesting the Board of County Commissioners review and if appropriate, approve budget adjustment BA two thousand and twenty-four, zero, 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 nine, four, to increase the Public Works General Services, General Services Contracted Services Cost Center by fifty-six thousand, one fifty-two, sixty-five cents from the Calvert Pine Senior Center Expansion and Renovation CIP to make the emergency sprinkler repairs to North Beach Senior Center. So as you remember, recall, this, uh, this happened in mid-July, but I just want to give a lot of kudos to, um, the General Services Staff because as soon as they got the alarm call, they were on it and prevented, um, a lot more flooding, um, than happened. So we're very grateful to that team. I do think this speaks to the age of buildings and the value of going above value options, because this should have been galvanized pipe. Um, this was two thousand and two when this was constructed.
I was gonna ask you, how long has that building been completed?
Two thousand and two.
It's not very long.
No, so paying attention to those construction projects and making sure they're using quality materials, pretty critical. So we'll, we're, we're, we have that in our mindset as we're going into the Calvert Pines, uh, renovation construction.
You're a good project manager.
Yep, absolutely, yeah.
I didn't hear a plug there at all. I didn't look to my left. Any other discussion, questions? Motion?
I move to approve budget amendment BA two oh two four dash nine four, to make the emergency sprinkler repairs to North Beach Senior Center.
Second.
Have motion, the second that we approve budget adjustment BA two zero two four dash zero, 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 nine, four. Any discussion on that motion, hearing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you Director.
Thank you.
Thank you Jennifer.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
That brings us to item four, Department of Human Resources Maryland Time to Care Act Presentation. Good morning Director.
Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning Commissioners, I'm Melanie Woodson, the Human Resources Director, and I will let my partners here introduce themselves.
Thank you Melanie, good morning Commissioners, my name is David Johnson, I'm a Vice President and I'm the Public Sector Practice Leader for Bolton. We are consulting an actuarial firm based here in Maryland, um, and I am prepared to talk to you about the Maryland Time to Care Act and answer any questions that you may have.
And I'm Mark Lynn, I'm Principal and Vice President of Bolton Health and longtime consultant to Calvert County.
So Commissioners, I'll go ahead and read the memo. Staff is currently evaluating the implications of the Maryland Time to Care Act. This act presents various options for providing paid leave to eligible employees and it's essential for the Board of County Commissioners to make an informed decision that aligns with the best interests of Calvert County Government and its workforce. Our trusted consultant, Mr. David Johnson, Vice President of Bolton, will provide a comprehensive overview of the Time to Care Act and present CCG with a range of compliance options. We recognize Mr. Johnson's expertise in this area and his insights into the act will be invaluable in guiding our decision-making process. The fiscal impact is currently unknown, a thorough assessment of the associated costs and benefits will aid the Board of County Commissioners in making a financially prudent choice. Staff is seeking guidance to gather additional information on option number three as presented. Following the presentation, we strongly encourage the Board of County Commissioners to engage in constructive discussions to thoroughly evaluate the merits of this action. And we're ready to start the presentation.
Thank you, um, I'm happy to walk through slide by slide in the presentation, but I do, and I do encourage you to ask questions as we go through. I do want to acknowledge we're joined by our colleague Adrian Kiefler, who's a Senior Consultant, who's in the audience behind us, so. In terms of the legislation, um, again, I'm gonna hit the high points and I encourage you to ask questions throughout. I want to give you an idea of what's required and most importantly, I want to go through the options that you have as an employer. There are three basic paths you can follow, so that's a key thing I want to talk about this morning, is what are those paths that we can follow to enable you to meet the requirements of the new legislation? Oh, there's a clip right here. Thank you, okay, so what is the Time to Care Act, this was passed in two thousand and twenty-two by the Maryland Legislature. It was updated in two thousand and twenty-three with some important changes, so what we're talking about today is really the updated version of the legislation originally passed in two thousand and twenty-two. It is a paid leave legislation. What's important, really important about this is it, it looks a lot like the family, the Federal Family Medical Leave Act, FMLA. It's import, it's important to note that it's different in significant ways from FMLA. First off, it's paid family leave, so if you think it's tough to get employees back to work from FMLA when they're not getting paid, well, it's gonna be even tougher when now they're actually getting paid something while they're off for this family leave. A second component that makes it different is that it is a very broad legislation in terms of who is covered. So I like to say, think of everybody that comes to Thanksgiving meal, they're probably going to be covered under the legislation as family members. And we can define that more in a moment, but I just want you to know that it is broader than FMLA in terms of who is covered as a family member under the legislation. So, um, just going to the next slide, three important dates, we wanted to make sure you're all, uh, understanding this morning. I'll start at the bottom, January first, two thousand and twenty-six, that's when the benefits become available to all employees working in Maryland. January first, two thousand and twenty-six, so it might be easy to say, well, that doesn't happen until two thousand and twenty-six, so why worry about it now? Well, I'll explain why, and I think you know already, there's some really important reasons to be concerned about this today. But the legislation requires that the benefits first be offered in January of two thousand and twenty-six. The next important date, uh, October first of two thousand and twenty-four, that's when employee contributions and employer contributions will begin for the state plan. So the state or Maryland through this legislation is creating a new program whereby employers who do not opt out of the state plan will automatically default into the state plan. So the state is, is requiring that this plan be self-sufficient. So, in order to make this plan work self-sufficiently, the state is collecting premiums from employers and their employees fifteen months ahead of the program. So if you do not opt out of the default state plan, you will be billed beginning in October of two thousand and twenty-four, even though the benefits do not begin until two thousand and twenty-five, so, I'm sorry, two thousand and twenty-six, thank you Mark. So benefits begin in two thousand and twenty-six, the premiums for the state plan began in October of two thousand and twenty-four. So think about it as maybe paying for your cable bill a year and three months before you ever get cable service. It's not gonna be really popular with employees and employee, employers, but that's why it's important, we'll talk about two other options you can, yes, sir.
And on that point, because you should go through, because I, boy, there's a lot about this thing disturbs me to death. What is the minimum employee requirement before a business is subjected to this?
If you have more than fifteen employees.
Fifteen.
Fifteen, one five, yes, so anybody with more than fifteen employees working in Maryland will, any employer with more than fifteen employees working in Maryland will be required to pay at least fifteen percent of the cost, I'm sorry, at least fifty, five zero percent of the cost.
So this premium that these businesses are gonna get hit with, this is, this prepay basically thing. Now that goes into this, this bank.
Yes.
Say an employee never uses it, is there a refund?
No.
I didn't think so, and then what if employee does use it, now are you expending additional funds on top of this?
Yes, in the sense that, so the, if you take the state plan, and I do want to make sure to talk about all three options, the state plan is option one. So this, the state would pay the benefits, if you go with option one, the state would pay the benefits to your employees. Of course, you're paying the premium, you and your employees, if you choose to share in the cost with your employees, pay for the program. The state would actually reimburse employees, but the cost for the county, in addition to the premium to go into the plan is, you're gonna have to backfill.
Oh, absolutely, oh yeah, it doesn't, because business don't stop, yeah, you, oh yeah, so, yeah, and, and that's what I say, s- small business, they're just wiping them off the page. I mean, they've already destroyed them with minimum wage that doesn't compete with Virginia and Delaware on border things, that the taxes, I mean, state of Maryland is horrible when it comes to this, to this type thing, I mean, it's, it's, they might as well say, why even have a business in the state of Maryland? And this right here, this is, this is a joke.
So who will be managing this?
So, it, the state will, the state, we're waiting to find out who will manage the state plan. The state may manage it with internal resources or the state may actually contract that.
So they'll get our county money and they'll be the managers for our employees.
If you take option one.
Okay.
Can you imagine what a business would have to charge, a small business, the guy who turns wrenches or the restaurants or whatever would have to charge to finance this? This is so irresponsible.
And the, the, and I, I don't disagree, and I, I mean, some good news that I can share today is, um, I, I, just to reiterate, there are options, but any of these options will cost the county money.
Oh yeah, you must say raise taxes.
Right.
I didn't say that.
I mean, that's what they want, that's what they want, that's what they want with all these programs from, from whether it's a blueprint or whatever, that's what they want. They don't know how to turn a dollar and make a dollar, they wanna push it down on the counties every time to pay for all this like-me legislation. And that's what it is, like me, I throw money at you so you'll like me.
I think the issue, as you've already alluded to for us, is if you add up this with the, the, the time that we already allow our employees.
Yes.
An employee could take off six months. And so, we can't have a job vacant for six months, so as you say, we've gotta backfill that with.
Right.
Either overworking, overworking currents there or bringing in temps. So it's not just the cost to fund the program, it's all these subsidiary.
And like President Hans says, it's not so like there's some temp agency out here that has all this specialty stuff.
Right.
Because we do everything in the county from engineers to roads to EMTs, I mean, there's a lot of training and insurances, so it's not just calling a temp agency.
Right, so I think because of the concerns that you're raising, um, you know, one of the things that, that Mark and I and Adrian and our team have been talking to clients about is, it's really important to, for the employer to work with a provider, who, and we're, again, we're gonna talk about the options shortly, but if you, if you were to hire a private insurance carrier, it's really important to work with a carrier who has experience getting people back to work. Because that's gonna be a pivotal part of, of managing the cost of this program, is how quickly you can get back, get people back to work. And frankly, that's one of our concerns about the state program, if you go the state, the, the default plan, not only will you have to pay premiums beginning in October of next year, but it would also be the state or the state's agent managing the return to work program. I suspect it may be easier to get the state plan to say, yeah, you can take a little bit more time, as opposed to a private insurance carrier with experience in getting people back to work.
And, and the other impact, you know, for us, it's one thing, but the school system.
Yes.
So now you're gonna allow teachers.
How many teachers?
To take off three months where they only worked ten months.
That's where it's.
And they can't get teachers now.
Correct.
So, 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 so the small employer out here that, that has this, um, is it his full-time employees or her full-time employees or part-time?
Both.
Both?
Yes.
So person works ten hours a week.
So there's an hour limit, as Mark noted, so there's, it, to be eligible for the benefit, an employee must work at least six hundred and eighty hours in the twelve months prior to the claim. The six hundred and eighty hours could be.
Fifteen hours a week.
Fifteen hours?
So, and that could be not only for the county, if the employee works some more hours at Home Depot or any other employer in the state, that counts towards that six hundred and eighty as well.
How about hospitals that are already so short-staffed? You know, we had, we just had a COVID, uh, you know, situation here where, where the hospitals were begging to give people, you know, I mean, think there's a little bit of duress during COVID, the whole hospital could take off.
Yes.
And be covered by Maryland.
It's a big issue for hospital providers.
We're getting a little ahead because in his presentation, he's gonna talk about what's eligible, but we did have a, a very brief presentation at Mako.
Yes.
And it did scare us, and I was quickly doing math for what it's gonna cost us.
Yes.
Um, and, you know, I don't think we want to come across as being hard, but when you go through the reasons you can take this leave, my estimation, it is pretty wide open.
Oh, and it is.
I can take it for any reason I want.
It is very wide open, and again, I think that underscores the importance of working with an organization that can help you manage that, who can sort of be the bad guy to say, that is not a legitimate reason that you need twelve, twelve weeks off.
But look at law enforcement, look how stressful that is, you can put the whole department out. And, and, and it would be legitimized, they, they, they pull up on the scene and see some tragic, unseeable thing that you could never unsee again, and tell them that person don't qualify, look at our military, we're gonna put the military out, I mean, say, oh, don't defend us, because you saw some bad stuff.
Well, you know, Hogan vetoed this and the present legislature, um, overrode his veto. Um, this to me looks like not only a financial burden for us in the county where we already are very generous with our employees and work with them, but also people in the workforce are having, or employers in the workforce are having a hard time getting employees to come back to work, to fill jobs. I see nothing but a total mess from this. And when you look over who is a family member, my God, that's, that's everybody who practically came through your door. If my dog dies, I'm gonna be upset, Commissioner Hans just lost his dog, that's like losing a family member. Yeah, I mean, this is, this is ludicrous to me.
So, uh, of course, our, our, uh, opportunity to serve the county is to make sure you know the options, the, the requirements and the options that are available. So we're in a position that we would, we can certainly continue to talk about the legislation, we're happy to do that. Uh, we want to make sure we also, um, are able to give you the information on the options that you can pursue as an employer to make sure that you comply, so.
So why don't we let you continue on?
But it's fun to talk about, it's, it's fun to talk about, so I certainly don't want to rush the conversation.
You know, remember, remember rain tax and, and Buddy educated me, excuse me, Commissioner Hans, he educated me on that, because I used to scream about rain tax, because as stupid as it sounded, right, you know, it used to make my eye twitch.
But.
But, as Commissioner Hans said, it had a purpose, you know, and if it was done right, you know, all the environmental problems that we're having, this was designed as a funding source for that. I understand if you wanted to take the high road and say the intent is there's somebody that had a traumatic thing, okay? But we just watched how COVID rolled out, we watched how ARPA funds rolled out, we watched people taking, and I'm sorry, and I'm not saying it's everybody, don't misconstrue that I said that to every single person, that's not what I'm saying, but we watched people take those PPP loans, okay? Because they had a business, they qualified and didn't have to pay it back, and we're seeing everything that's in there, and I had people say to me, I took it. And I'm like, but you had some of the best years you, the best year you ever had, doesn't matter, state of Maryland put it out there, I took it. And the kids pay it back, generations pay it back, it is unsustainable to consistently roll this type of legislation out on people, and we just sit there and go, what are we gonna do, it's the state, and unfortunately, that's what we put back in there every time, is these like-me legislators. Please like me, don't have the guts to tell me the truth and what I need to hear, they used to say, don't tell me what I want to hear, tell me what I need to hear. But we don't want to hear that anymore, you know, we want to hear, I'm special, no, you're only special when you do things that are special. You know, when you contribute and put back, just everybody gets a trophy stuff, God, it makes me sick, you know?
If I could just get Commissioner Hart to care about his job.
God.
Well, we, uh, and we certainly want to make sure we're addressing all of your, your questions and your concerns in the, so in terms of. So in terms of, you know, who is covered in, for employers and employees, clearly the county's covered, you have to do this. Unless the legislation is overturned. The, so it's any organization employing at least one employee in Maryland, working in Maryland. And the individuals, the people who work for you, will qualify for the benefit as long as they work at least 680 total hours. In Maryland, in the 12 months prior to having a claim. And again, that could be, it could be 400 with you and 300 with another employer, and that would cover. So challenge for HR is, you know, how do we track hours? How are we gonna find out how much a person covers, works at another job? But that's maybe a discussion for another day. You can't pay HR enough for the work that will be required for HR to manage these kinds of.
Oh, how much did you pay him?
But remember, she won't be there because of the stress of this situation, she won't be there.
She'll be off for 12 weeks.
So if somebody takes this for the, the time off, do they have to work another 680 hours? Before getting the benefits again, or? Yes, what qualifies for that?
Yes, they could, so they can exhaust their 12 weeks of paid leave in a 12-month period. But then they would become eligible for an additional 12 weeks after that. So you, the employee would always have to have 680 hours of work experience prior to a claim, yes. Yes, so. What are, you know, what are the triggers? I think you all are familiar with the triggers. These look very much like the triggers under FMLA, which you're already. Required to provide, but the big difference, of course, two things, number one, this is paid leave, and number two, it's a. It's everybody that comes to Thanksgiving meal, it's a very broad list of covered individuals, and I'll talk about that in a moment. But just to summarize quickly, it's the care for a newborn child or adopted or foster child. It's care for a family member with a serious health condition, that's physical or mental health condition. Number three is to care if the employee needs time off for herself or himself related to a serious health condition that keeps her from working. Number four and five both have to do with military service. So four is if the member needs to care for a, a next of kin. Related to a serious health condition from military, resulting from military service. And number five is if an employee has a spouse who's being deployed, basically, to take time off for that military exigency. So I talked about Thanksgiving meal.
Go back. I'm sorry. So item three. What, what kind of documentation do I have to provide under item three?
So we will see the detail, excellent question, we, we will see the details for that, we hope, and the leg, and the regulations. That the Department of Labor is scheduled to release by January 1st of 2024.
Oh, you gotta pass it to know what's in it. You gotta pass it to know what's in it.
So we do know that it will be something that requires, the legislation states that it must be something that requires the ongoing treatment. By a medical provider. So it cannot be, you know, just an episodic thing where a person's no longer seeing a physician, but they, you know, injured their leg. But they're no longer under a medical provider's care, that not, that will not qualify as a serious health condition. They have to continue to see a, you know, medical provider, and it is physical or mental health issue that would.
So you do need a doctor's note? Oh, good, that gives me a little comfort.
Yes, yes. But again, it's gonna be really important who's managing that, who's reviewing that doctor's note to say, this is legitimate, maybe this is not legitimate.
Oh, we have a wonderful HR department, they can take care of that.
More work for HR. But, so who is a family member? It is very broad. Just as an example, it's everyone we would expect, it's the employee, the spouse, the children, the stepchildren. It's the, you know, domestic partner for the employee, it's also the grandchildren. It's also the grandparents, it's also the siblings of employees. Adopted or step siblings. So it is very, very broad in term, in terms of who is covered as a family member. So the employee could take time off for any of those, to care for any of those individuals.
So how do I qualify that I have to stay home and take care of my grandfather?
So the medical provider would need to validate that you, the employee, that it's medically necessary for you to be. At home to care for the individual.
So the medical provider for that family member has to provide documentation that this individual needs care. And so I'm gonna take off and I'm gonna provide that care.
I keep underscoring the point, that's, makes it so important to have a good provider working with you who would question, well, wait a second. If the other spouse is taking care of grandmother, why do both spouses have to be, that's just an example.
Yeah, but legally, legally, it wouldn't matter, 'cause legally, they both could. There, there, they could do different jobs, so their employer would say, yeah, you need to be home for that, and you, you know, 'cause, I mean, right? Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, quite, yeah, absolutely, quite possibly, you could have.
Or if the two don't talk, they wouldn't know that Catherine's been given leave and I've been given leave to take care of the same person. There's no communication.
I mean, were you gonna call their job and, no?
It is, it is gonna be very, very difficult to manage, and that's one of the reasons we've been recommending. It's probably too much for HR to do, and turn, no offense to HR staffs, but.
You don't know our HR.
This is a heavy lift, even for the very, very large school systems and very, very large counties in Maryland that we work with. They don't wanna turn this over to HR to say, we're gonna add this to your plate along with everything else.
This puts such a burden on, like you said, largest school systems. What are they going to do? School's only 181 days. So you just took 60 out of there, right? Five days, you just took 60, one-third out of there? That doesn't mean, if, and what if they get sick along the way or a vacation, that, that's just that part. That is so unfair to these, to, to, it's a small guy, all the way through.
But there are legitimate examples of people that have serious medical conditions that certainly should have this. The problem is, this is.
But, but the verbiage, right, should dictate to that, it shouldn't be as broad and, and, and open-ended as this is.
It, it, it is indeed very broad. I will say, this is not in any way makes life easier. The reality is, everybody in Maryland is, is subject to this legislation, so.
But look at even what it's called, the time to care. Sounds just like a politician, doesn't it? It does, and people are gonna criticize me today for saying it, oh, politicians are saying it, but it does, you know, the time to care. You know, I'm waiting for the time to, to, ah, to, ah. Support people that are putting back into the system, you know, the people that are doing it right, the people that contribute. I'm waiting for that one, you know, when, when's that legislation come, you know? Yeah, the people that help out every day, 'cause they don't want that. They, they do what they do 'cause they know it's the right thing to do.
Right, exactly. So how much is paid? It's 65, well, it's a rather complicated formula, but basically, think of it this way, the lower paid employees are going to get a higher percentage of their wage. Versus the middle tier and the higher income earners. The higher income earners will cap at a thousand dollars per week. The lower income workers are going to make 90% of their salary while they're out, up to 12 weeks. So, again, it's, it's a formula defined by the state, everybody's gonna have to follow that formula. It's not like one employee, one county's gonna offer a more attractive Time to Care Act benefit than another. The only way you can differ the benefit from what you offer versus other employers, really, it's two ways. Number one is what you charge employees, if you decide to charge employees, and also who you work with to manage the plan.
When you say charge, what does that mean?
Actually, great question, I'll get to that, I think that's on the very next slide, if you go, so what is the cost? So employers are required to pay at least half the cost. So you can choose to pay more, you could pay 60, 70, 80, 100% of the cost if you choose. But you, the state legislation requires you, the employer, to pay at least 50% of the cost. We don't know what the cost is yet.
It's like an employee tax.
It's like an employee tax, yes.
So it'll come out of their paycheck every.
If you choose to do the cost sharing with the employees, yes.
So that 50%, you could, they could go to the employee and say, we want 25% from you? Or 50?
Up to 50, yes. So the, the legislation says that the premium cannot be more than 1.2% of payroll. And it directs the Maryland Secretary of Labor to establish what that rate actually is. So the legislation says it can never be more than 1.2% of payroll, but the legislation turns to the Department of Labor to say, well, you guys. Department of Labor, you set the rate, you just can't set it any higher than 1.2% of payroll. That rate will be published by October 1st of this year. So we don't know the rate today, that will be, that will be out by October 1st of this year. We know it will not be more than 1.2% of payroll. That's a big number, 1.2.
When you figure our payroll and we have to fund the school system, so I always add them in, we're gonna have to fund them too. So between the two payrolls, I don't know, I can't do math that quick, it's probably 300 million dollars or something like that. If you add the two payrolls together. So at 1%, that's at least 3 million dollars, at least.
Of course, that's not all the hidden cost of all the labor for, like you say, 'cause there is no temp agency under the sun that can fulfill that.
'Cause there's gonna be administrative costs to do the program. Whoever to manage the program, you add on those costs, so.
Right, which we'll talk in more detail about the options, but I think that's one of the reasons Maryland Association of Counties, Mako. Has put together this collaborative to help at least minimize the administrative cost and insurance cost for operating the program.
So if an employer had an employee making a thousand dollars gross a week. And he said, I'm just not paying it. And he put 100% of that cost back on the employee, what does that look like? Do we know? Well, you give 100% of that 50% cost on them, because if the employer is responsible for 50%, could he say, well, you're, you're just gonna pay that whole 50%? He can do that, right? So, so the employer would say, well, I'm not paying any of it, 'cause he's gonna pay it, or she's gonna pay it, right?
The employer has to.
Has to pay 50%, at least 50%.
Okay, so the employer, okay, so he would pay 50, and he can, the employee could pay 50.
Correct. But the employer has to pay, so you, the county, for example, you, as the employer, have to pay at least 50%.
So if the bill was 100 bucks a week, say, for the person. The employer could pay the 100, or he could say, I'm only paying 50, or 80, or 20 type thing?
We'd have to pay at least 50, right.
So you'd at least have to pay 50 bucks of it. But if he doesn't get anything from the employees, paying the whole hundred dollars.
Correct, but the, but the way it would work is the, the state, if, if an employer takes the state plan. The state would, would get the money from the employee, the state would get it through payroll.
Like a deduction, right, right.
Correct, so. So that's, so you have to share at least 50% of the cost, we'll know the state rate. Not that the state rates would be applicable, 'cause if you go with option two or option three, well, the state rate's still important, because that. That's how you get the cap on what employees pay. Employees cannot pay more than 50% of the state rate.
Do we know what percent voted for this? I mean, is it, 'cause obviously the governor vetoed it, it went through, I mean, is this, this a done deal? It's just a formality at this point?
It's a done deal unless the legislature. You know, amends it, again, I mean, who knows in 2024 or 2025, the Maryland Legislature could take it back. But I doubt at this point.
Don't drive and think like that.
I think it's here to stay. So in terms of what's on the, I'll go ahead and go to the next slide, the. Just as a, a quick example, two employees, Michael earns $45,000 a year, he's gonna get 90% of his salary through the Time to Care Act benefit. Maria makes 90,000, she's gonna get capped out at a thousand dollars. The next point I wanna make is how you coordinate with your existing disability plans, if you offer disability plans. Or time off, would be very significant, because the legislation says you cannot pay more than 100% of the person's salary. Which makes sense, I mean, the employee can't double, the employee can double dip, but the employee, if the employee gets 90% of salary through the Time to Care Act benefit. Then she cannot get more than 10% from other employer-provided benefits, which makes sense, it's not gonna be more than 100% of salary. The important thing is, how do you coordinate with your disability or your time off program? Do you, if, under a disability plan, if you pay 80% of salary, you may wanna say, well, we're not gonna give you any more than you would have gotten under our existing. We'll just deduct what you get under the Time to Care Act.
And we have that ability?
You can, the legislation allows you to do that, you, the legislation requires the Time to Care Act benefit to be the primary benefit. So the person has to be able to first get this benefit that we're talking about today, the Time to Care Act. Before they tap into any additional benefits like time off or disability benefits.
Yeah, so we can, I mean, one of the things that, that we would help you do is figure out how you adjust your current benefits to, you know, so that you aren't paying. More than you have to, and so that employees aren't over-incentive to, to be out, so. But again, Time to Care Act has to pay first, and then you can amend what you have in place now. To, as Dave said, you could just say, you know, no more than what you pay now. Based on what the Time to Care Act.
So, so you, you've, you've done a slide on what an employee would collect. Do you have enough information that you've done a slide on if you split the cost 50/50, what it would cost an employee?
I, we cannot really do that today because we don't know the cost today.
But the state's estimated 1% of our payroll is gonna be our premium.
1.2%, we know that's the max. Now, we, what we're hoping is through these other options, particularly.
We can reduce that cost.
That we can do it at a, at a lower cost. I mean, we certainly, we can certainly do that. You know, for these two examples.
Right, and to, and to Mark's point, I mean, if you, the cap is 1.2%. So if the state, and we'll see the rates from the State Department of Labor by October 1st of this year. So if the state comes out on October 1st and says, the rate's gonna be 1.2% of payroll. Then the max that you would pay, you would, no, I'm sorry, the, the minimum you would have to pay would be half of that, would be 0.6% payroll. So that would be kind of the quick math, that would, you have to pay at least, if the rate is 1.2%, we don't know what it is, what it will be. But let's, for example, if it ends up being 1.2, then the max, the minimum that you would pay would be the 0.5%. I'm, I'm sorry, 0.6%.
The state's never been really good at running big programs.
Yes, you may remember when, when the.
So if the legislation changes, I'm afraid we're not gonna like the changes. The 1.2% is by what'll change.
Yes, so I think that's part of the impetus for Mako to say, look, we know this is coming down the tracks at all the counties. And May, Mayb has jumped on his board, the Maryland Association of Boards of Education. So I think the way they're approaching it with a collaborative is, we're gonna have to deal with this thing around the state as counties and school systems. Let's at least find a way to mitigate the cost by working together, and I'll, I'll get to that in a moment, 'cause I'm anxious to tell you about the collaborative. But if we can go to the, the next slide. The point of this slide is, you have to follow the law, there's really no way you could skirt this. I don't think any of our county or school system clients is gonna try to say, we're not, we're not gonna pay attention to the law. This is really for employers, private employers that might say, we'll just, we're not gonna follow the law. That's not a good path, it is, it is the law, so you're gonna have to follow it. The next slide. Is where we get into the options that are available. So three key options, three options basically. Number one, you can default into the state plan. That will require premiums beginning in October of next year, 15 months before the benefits begin in 2026. That's the default option, so if you do nothing, it's a good thing we're talking about this today.
And when does the employer have to, this is January of this coming year, right? That the employer would have to declare?
They're gonna start collecting premiums in October.
The state will start collecting premiums in October.
So if, if you're Joe's Pizza and you've got 20 employees, when does Joe have to pick which way he's going?
Joe, certainly before October 1st of 2024. Because if he doesn't do anything, Joe's gonna get a bill from the state on October of 2024.
Retroback of everything.
Beginning in October of 2024.
1.2% of this payroll.
Has the state said when you need to express your desire to opt out?
The state has, good question, the state has not said when you have to express, but what we know is. Worked out, Mark and I, Adrian and I, our team are telling employers, don't wait until September of 2024. To go to the state to say, we don't want that default plan, we wanna do something on our own, because what could happen is, you, you'll fall to the back of the line. And the state may never process your application in time.
And, and you're just sitting on it there, so this guy wants to opt out. Now, prove he got it in. I mean, you see how slow stuff goes, so he does this, like you say, he thinks September he's good. They still don't have it processed, so in November, he's getting notifications, he's in default violation, holding up his other licenses to get his. For to do all his other business, almost forcing you to just default and take it on the chin. That's right, into the state plan, so now what does he do? You know, number one is incentives to. You know, number one, his incentive is to lay people off. Because the less employees, the less his bill is, number one. Two, he's gotta think long and hard about that part-time employee. How valuable is that person? You know, and then, and then three, you know, maybe it's not worth it to be in business anymore. Because with everything else out there, it is, it is, you know. And, and, and he, because now, like you said, who's gonna manage it? Who's gonna manage Joe's Pizza when he's going, "Well, we defaulted out to this other one to watch over it, because now there was changes." And he doesn't, because every year, there's changes. Well, now it was 1.2, it's 1.4. Well, he didn't see that, because he's too busy working. And now he's not paying in the proper amount and he gets that back. I mean, it's a nightmare.
Yes. But it gets easier. We agree.
Gets better?
Well, it gets better in the sense that you don't have to take the state plan. It's still going to be expensive. But if you make the right move, you don't, you will not have to opt to default into the state.
But does the state give you option B or C? Or do you have to create your own?
You have to create.
And see, that's where the scary part is, because Joe thought he was good. And they said he was good and two years went by.
Right.
And there was changes in the legislation.
No, because Joe is not gonna be able to just send him a letter and say, "I'm opting out." Joe, I would assume he's gonna have to provide what he's gonna do instead of.
Right.
So, he's not off the hook just because he says, "I'm opting out."
So, we're assuming that insurance companies who manage disability-type plans and time-off plans already are gonna have options available for smaller employers.
I would hope so. Because somebody's gotta manage this that watches it all the time. Like you say, what in HR, but how about that small? How about a daycare? You know, that's already got so many different things going on. How does that daycare survive in that? The daycare's running on a shoestring with providers now. You know?
They gotta move 15.
And, so.
That's right.
So, option two, we're just gonna say, "I don't think that's a very good option, that you would administer the plan yourself and self-insure." That, you know, you, that, talk about the work involved and then the state is gonna be looking over your shoulder to make sure you're funding it properly. So, it is an option, but frankly, it's not one that we think is very viable.
Even for the big counties, to Mark's point, they're shying away from option two, because it's just too much work to put on your own staff to manage a massive new program like this. But the options there, the state has said, "If you choose, you can self-fund the program. You can self-administer it." We think option three is really the more viable option, which is to contract out with an insurance carrier with experience managing these kinds of programs around the country. So, that's option three. So, then if you think about option three, there's a couple of ways you could pursue option three. One would be, you could do an RFP, just like you do for other benefit programs, and select a carrier with the best rates and the best contract terms. So, you basically run your own RFP process like you do for other benefits. Another way to approach option three would be to come in through the Mabo, Mabe Collaborative. So, that's where the Maryland Association of Counties and the Maryland Association of Boards of Education, and now recently, the Maryland Municipal League has joined in on this. So, all three of those organizations have combined to create this collaborative. They've combined forces, basically, to create a collaborative. So, that one big RFP will be done. So, all the counties that participate, the school systems, the towns and the cities, will split the cost of running the RFP that we're gonna be doing, by the way. And so, it's really less work for Mark and Adrian and me, because we're doing one RFP for a whole bunch of counties and towns and, and school systems, as opposed to getting hired by each one to do a separate RFP. But that's okay, because we know this is in the best interest of our clients. So, we're gonna, there's one RFP that Mako, Mabe and Maryland Municipal League are doing to select a vendor to provide this insurance coverage. That will enable the participating employers to not have to pay premiums until 2026, until January 1st of 2026. We also expect that it will help us achieve economies of scale. So, it's not just getting rates for Calvert County or Calvert County schools, but it's putting all the counties together, all that participate, that is. And we're hoping most will participate. So, we'll get those economies of scale with the carriers and we'll get, I think, a lot, we'll be more successful in getting really good contract terms and we'll be successful in making sure we get the vendor who's gonna be the best at getting people back to work. That's a really, really important part of this.
How scary is that, what you're saying, though?
Getting the people back?
Yeah.
It's going to be a challenge.
I mean, can you find a place that doesn't have Help Wanted sign? I remember two years ago, three years ago, where it was in Mako. Shame, the year that, remember, we had the problem with the hotel? What was that, two years ago, three years ago? Whatever it was, you couldn't get a reservation for dinner. Couldn't do it. I mean, and there would be tables wide open and the place would say.
No staff.
Yeah, there's no staff. And then there was some saying, "Well, we're closed Monday, Tuesday, because we don't have staff." Line of people. I mean, and there was no pay. Why would I come back to work? I mean, I know I would, just my mentality. But, but I mean, if you couldn't then, why would this incentivize folks to? What's Maryland's plan for that? They're gonna start writing checks to people that close for days? I mean.
Good question.
And then, and then how does Joe, the pizza man, how does he, okay, his payroll was $1 million a year, say?
Right.
And he said, "You know what? Automated, automations came in and I'm down to $800,000, but I've done this other plan." How does he notify them to lower me down? I mean, he's constantly having to probably update this and juggle this and then back to the state's hands of going, "Well, you could just pay our lump sum and be done."
We should, we should try to let him get through his presentation.
Yeah, sorry, sorry, yeah.
It's okay. So.
It's okay for you, but I have a lot of stuff.
Yeah, it's true.
Okay, I'm sorry. So, yes, options, so the third option is contract out. And I've talked about the collaborative, but if you wanna go to the. Oh, I think that was the, yeah, that's the final slide, basically, to say like.
I have more slides. There's more slides in the book.
Maybe it's, what's on the screen is, it's not advancing, maybe? Or that was the last slide in the.
Yeah, I have more.
The next slide talks about potential ongoing challenges for employees and then there is a slide talks about the Mako.
Correct. Yes, so. Ah, there it is, thank you. It's back now, okay. So, this is, you know, we included this slide for the employers. You know, to the extent you're interested in self-funding.
We're not interested in that.
But you're not interested. So, that was more like caution. Yeah, you can skip that one. So, the next slide is the collaborative, the Mabe, Mako, Time to Care Act collaborative. So, the benefits of joining the collaborative. Certainly, we hope, well, we know this would allow employers to avoid paying the premiums next year. Because this allows you to go the insured route, to avoid paying those premiums starting next year. We also expect that we'll see the economies of scale, both in the administrative as well as the insurance cost. Administrative, meaning every county, every school system doesn't have to pay for its own RFP. It'd be great if everybody wanted to pay Mark and Adrian and me to do separate RFPs, but we figure it's better for our clients.
That would cause stress and I'd have to go out on the time.
You'd have to take off three months, right?
So, we said, "Let's just, everybody, let's just do one big RFP and we can split the cost among all the counties and the school systems and towns and cities." So, and also, we'll save on the insurance cost, because we're getting the economies of scale. When we put, just the basic insurance, when you get a lot more lives in the pool, we get increased marketing, increased leverage with the carriers versus bidding each one separately. This will, hopefully, it'll make things easier from an administrative standpoint, because the HR team, joining the collaborative, HR team will be able to compare notes with other HR, county HR, school system HR professionals around the state. Say, you know, "How are you guys tracking eligibility? How are you communicating this out to employees? How do you get people back to work sooner?" There's gonna be a lot of information sharing in the collaborative. That's gonna be one of the key benefits.
But we could still refine our own program.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
It doesn't mean that everybody that joins this is gonna have the exact same program.
Absolutely.
This is just the administration and doing the overhead part of the program.
Those things precisely. And it's being able to share best practices. But every county, every school system ultimately decides how they're gonna do the program.
Gotcha.
So, so it really is a way to minimize the administrative burden, reduce your cost and ultimately, you ensure compliance. So, that's the summation. Other than I wanted to point out the calendar. I am happy to update the first number on the screen. Originally, the deadline for committing in the collaborative was Friday. It was gonna be September 1st. That has changed. Mako and Mabe have now said counties and school systems have until October 1st to commit to the collaborative. And a, an email went out Friday of this past week. Hopefully, Mr. Willis got it. I think the chief administrative officers for each of the counties in Maryland did get a, were supposed to have received an email from Mako about the collaborative. So, that went out on Friday of this past week. And a similar email went out to all the school superintendents last week from Mabe about this collaborative. So, the decision, commitment date is by October 1st. So, counties, school systems, towns and municipalities need to notify the collaborative by October 1st. So, be sure to correct that in your mind, that first number. It's no longer September 1st. It's now been amended to October 1st. That will enable us, the consultant, to get the RFP out on the street by December 1st or thereabouts and then get responses back from the carriers, ideally by the beginning of March, which enables two months to analyze the bids, to be able to make, work with the collaborative to make a decision on which carrier is selected. So, then all the participants can then go to the state ahead of that October 1st deadline and say, "We want out of the default plan. We don't wanna pay premiums starting next year. We're gonna do it on our own through an insured program." And one of the, we're already talking with the Maryland Department of Labor, the Maryland Insurance Administration about the collaborative. So, in a sense, the collaborative members are gonna jump in line in front of all, of Joe's Pizza and any other employers in the state that are gonna be doing something on their own. Because we've got the.
Bigger chunk of the pie.
Bigger chunk of the pie with all these counties, school system, towns and municipalities saying, "We're all coming into this collaborative." That's gonna be easier for the folks at DOL to see this application and say, "Stamp, approve, move on." I'm more worried about Joe's Pizza, who's.
How long is that?
Yes, with no help and no guidance. You never get any guidance. I mean, we asked about blueprint. Well, we're still getting it together. When marijuana, marital marijuana, you know, we begged for guidance. No. You know, it's just never that. I mean, it's always just put it out there and figure it out later. And that guy is gonna get hurt. Those daycares are gonna get hurt. And, you know, any, any of these folks that are, that are just barely hanging on, and what did they do wrong? Nothing.
So, I want to entertain any questions that you guys have on the legislation? Any remaining questions on the legislation? Or more, perhaps most importantly, about the options that you have as an employer and the collaborative? So, happy to entertain any additional questions?
We really do appreciate your presentation.
Oh, absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Because we just had the discussion at Mako and she's either really good or really lucky that we had this discussion so quick.
It's skill, right, Mal? There's no luck.
She's not saying a word.
She's rarely good.
She's taking good care of you. Timing was perfect, so.
Yeah. Thank you, Mal.
They have any more questions? So, we're gonna entertain a motion. The chair would entertain a motion.
I'm going to be approved. Stop gathering additional information on option number three.
Second.
I have a motion and then a second. Is there a discussion on the motion? So, I'm just gonna throw it out there. Can we include in our motion that we're gonna work with the collaborative? Too soon for that, Director?
Human Resources would greatly appreciate a motion to work with the collaborative to opt out of the plan and proceed with option three.
I'm just throwing it out there, because, you know, we've got a good relationship with Mako and we certainly wanna be a partner for a bigger, you know, bigger partnership.
Same concern we have.
Yeah, be a bigger advantage and benefit.
How many other counties have obligated to the collaboration?
So, the email only went out on Friday with a memorandum of agreement. So, I don't know, we've got, most of the counties, just about everybody we're talking to says, "Yes, they won't end." The formality is, you have to sign the memorandum of agreement.
And we're not doing that today, but at least they know and they, you know, gives them some background information of who's in, who's not.
We work with two of the larger counties in Maryland and they have both indicated that they're gonna go that route. So, we think it's gonna be a significant percentage of the county's and the school system.
Just throwing it out for discussion. Any other discussion on the motion?
Nope.
All right. Hearing none, all this in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Good to see all of you again.
I think you have direction, Mal, in giving the motion.
Great seeing you all.
Absolutely.
Great to see you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That brings us to item five, Office of the County Attorney, Request for State Legislation.
Good afternoon, Commissioners.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Since you've spent so much time on what they do to you, let's talk about what they do for you or could do for you.
There's something?
A short discussion.
Yeah, that won't take long. Done next.
So, Commissioners, I'll read the memo. The Commissioner's system is the oldest form of government in Maryland, county government in Maryland. The county's governing body under this form, the county commissioners derives from the old levy court system established shortly after the American Revolution. All of the legislative and executive powers of the county commissioners come from the state legislature approved by the governor. Consequently, commissioner counties only have those powers specifically granted to them and those implicitly needed to exercise those powers. Because of that, we have an annual tradition of collecting requests to go to Annapolis to ask for additional authorities, what you might consider you need for the future. No action is requested today. Staff will return an open session on September 12th for a vote of support, no support or no position. Those supported or not opposed by a majority vote in open session will be presented to the delegation and the senators representing Calvert County on October 17th at Harriet Elizabeth Brown 901 Dairs Beach Road in Prince Frederick. So there were 10 requests that were received from the county departments, the county commissioners, the state's attorney's office, and the citizens. There was a program of outreach that was initiated through our Department of Communications and Media Relations that had advertisements on movie theaters, in the webpages, in the social media, and we did get a few requests that came in that way. Again, today, we're just looking at what those requests are. We'll be back on September 12th to ask you to take a position or not, or opposition on each of these items. Item number one is requesting authority to create a local preference. As currently written into the code, the public local laws of Calvert County are purchasing and procurement authorities do not include the ability for the county to favor county-based vendors over out-of-county vendors in awarding procurement contracts. Today, you do have the reciprocal preference. That is, if a business is coming from a county where they offer a local preference, you can apply that as a penalty to that company's bid so that it evens the playing field for the Calvert County business here at home. But this was a request that was made last year. It was supported by the minority chamber, the local NAACP, the Minority Business Alliance, the Circle of Angels Initiative, the Calvert County Chamber of Commerce, and others. It did not get dropped, we're, well, did not get out of committee last year. Staff is working, and the director of economic development is working to make sure we have a different result this coming year. Item number two is the solicitation of money within the right-of-ways, the public right-of-ways. So in the transportation article today, panhandling is addressed for more than half of the county or the state's political subdivisions. In Carroll, Charles, Hartford, Washington Counties, a person may not stand in a roadway, median divider, or intersection to solicit money or donations of any kind from the occupant of a vehicle. In Prince George's County, a person may not stand in a highway to solicit money or donations of any kind from an occupant of a vehicle. In Arundel County, a person may not stand in a highway to solicit money or donations of any kind from the occupant of a vehicle. In Montgomery County, the county council may enact a legislation to require a person to obtain a permit before the person may stand in a roadway or median divider on a sidewalk adjacent to a roadway to solicit money or donations of any kind. In Allegheny and Cecil Counties, except for representatives of a qualified organization, a person may not stand in a roadway, median divider, or intersection to solicit money or donations of any kind from the occupant of a vehicle. Qualified organizations mean any fire company or bona fide religious fraternal civic or war veterans or charitable organization. In Baltimore County, the governing body of a municipal corporation in Baltimore County can adopt an ordinance or resolution to create a permit program to allow persons to stand in the roadway. In Howard County, a person may not stand in the state highway or highway right-of-way to solicit money or donations. In Frederick County, a person may not stand in a roadway, median divider, or intersection to solicit money or donations from the occupant of a vehicle. So this is not a issue that's unfamiliar to the General Assembly. Calvert County has been excluded.
So are all those transportation articles?
That is all from the transportation.
It's all transportation, okay. I didn't know if any of it was local ordinance or-
Yes, sir. All of that is Title 21, second title.
It's been a while since I studied that. I just dumped all that.
They're actually all in the same section of the transportation article. So again, it's not something that the General Assembly is unfamiliar with. It's not something that they don't know how to deal with.
Correct.
It did not get submitted last year by our delegation. We're hoping to have a different result this year. It's one of the reasons we're moving the meeting up to October with the senators and the delegations. November 1 is the deadline for prefiled bills.
Do we, do we know when those counties implemented those?
We can certainly go back and find out.
It might be arresting to know how far back they're going.
And is there a reason we went with Allegheny and Cecil instead of any of the other ones? Would that have made a difference or no?
Because they already had, if you recall, last year, we talked about fill-the-book campaigns, and we talked about instances like that.
They had loose caveats, so.
It's already built into their definition of qualified organizations.
Our delegate shot this down, so we need to make clear to our delegate any problems that he had with it last year, that those problems or those concerns are not valid concerns. We need to explain this better to him.
We'll certainly make every effort. The state's attorney was here earlier. He was not able to stay. He is also in support of this legislation, so he will be sending support behind it. The third request comes from our Department of Technology Services. They've requested that the formal bid limit be raised from $30,000 to $50,000 and that that be tied to the CPI for Washington DC area. That's actually changed recently. It's now Northern Virginia includes Calvert CPI study area. But he wrote that inflationary pressures have increased all goods, the cost of all goods in the US economy, the price of technology has not been immune from this. There are many articles, the software price inflation at 24%. Solicitation limits must to increase as a result, in line with economic activity. I would like to see an increase in the formal solicitation from $30,000 to $50,000. Furthermore, I'd like to see legislation that would peg this to the CPI. So again, we're not asking for a decision today. There are articles that are available to support his contentions. Request number four, Parks and Recreation, modifying the language to give the county an additional 2% of the gaming revenue that is generated in Calvert County. This was actually brought first to my attention by Delegate Fisher. The commissioners have supported this request for multiple years. It has never made it out of committee yet. But this would generate an additional $1 million per year in tax revenue going just to recreation and parks programs. It would go first to the Calvert Youth Recreational Opportunities Fund, and then from there, once Ward Park is built out, it would help generally with recreation programs.
You said about a million?
It is. Based on the revenues, 2% equals about a million dollars. Request number five is a citizen request to outlaw companies like Mosquito Joe, Mosquito Sheriff, that are spraying yards, backyards with pimethrinz that kill pollinators, no pollinators, no farms, no food. Request number six was also a citizen request to require state and local government agencies to use alternative chemicals for de-icing, salted, for de-icing roads. Salt to be developed, identified by the Environmental Department, presumably the Maryland Department of the Environment. Request number seven was also a citizen request that boats and real estate transfer on death without the need to go through probate. Request number eight was a citizen request, better speed control on Route 4, including the use of speed cameras.
But they're going to get their wish. We don't even need this.
In one school zone, that's correct. Maybe more.
The first amendment.
Request number nine was also a citizen request. They're trying to address the Stark Law. They requested that a physician or a physician group practice be prohibited from owning, operating a physical therapy clinic, helped to support the physician self-referral or Stark Law, which prohibits a physician from referring their patients to a physical therapy clinic that's within their building. And the final request is legislation intend to, intended to address a perception of conflicts of interest. This citizen is working directly with Delegate Fisher, and we've asked Delegate Fisher's office for draft of the legislation so we can present that more clearly. So again, we'll be back on September 12th. We will look at when the panhandling bills went into effect for the different jurisdictions, and if there are any other questions, we'll address those at that time as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That brings us to a work session with Department of Planning and Zoning. Director, morning, oh, afternoon.
Good afternoon, Mary Beth Cook, Director of Planning and Zoning. With me is Jessica Gattano, our Planner 3, and we are here to present the Dunkirk, Prince Frederick feasibility studies on bike and pedestrian.
So just-
Forgo the memo if we?
Yeah, you can forgive the memo. I was just wondering why we just did Dunkirk and Prince Frederick.
I'm sorry? I didn't-
Why do we do just Dunkirk and Prince Frederick? People in Solomons and Huntington or St. Leonard's might want to know why they were left out. Just ask them.
The grant that we received was for, well, I'm given to that, but it was limited funding.
Okay. Just so they know, I don't want to give phone calls.
And I do believe we chose these because we were working on the Dunkirk and Prince Frederick Town Center master plans.
Master plans?
Yes.
Okay.
So jumping in, again, my name's Jessica Gattano, Planner 3, the Department of Planning and Zoning. And so I'm going to be presenting the final report of the Dunkirk and Prince Frederick bikeways feasibility study. So some background, how we got here. In early 2020, the Hogan administration announced a $3.78 million in fiscal year 2021 grant funding opportunities to support bicycle safety and access improvements across the state. The funds are made possible through the Maryland Department of Transportation, or MDOT, Kim Lamphier's BikeWay Network Program. This program was founded in 2011. The BikeWay's program provides state transportation grant funding for planning, design, and construction of bicycle infrastructure. In 2021, the county board of, the Calvert County Board of County Commissioners was awarded grant funding in the amount of $88,000 with a matching fund contribution of $22,000 for a feasibility study with a focus area on the Dunkirk and Prince Frederick Town Centers. Again, while we were going through those master plans, it just seemed like the right focus areas. Our primary goal of these studies is to connect key destinations within the town centers with a low-stress network of bicycle facilities for all users of all ages and abilities. The intent of the study is to serve short trips within the Prince Frederick and Dunkirk Town Centers. It is not the intention at this time to connect the town centers with one another. The proposed improvements are intended to serve a variety of users for very localized trips, and also to obtain goals consistent with the 2040 comprehensive plan. The comprehensive plan adopted in 2019 and amended in 2022 advocates for the creation of a safe, of safe and attractive paths that allow people to travel within the town centers connecting residential, commercial, recreational, institutional, and employment areas. So real quickly, there are five primary bicycle facility types that are included in the report. From left to right on the screen, the bicycle facilities go from most protection and separation from motorists to the least. From the left, we have the shared-use path. This would be the ideal facility anywhere and everywhere for bicyclists and pedestrians in a perfect world. But obviously, within an area like this, which is already quite developed, opportunities for that is limited. But these pathways are ideally 10 to 12 feet wide to accommodate bidirectional walking and bicycling with a two-foot wide grass shoulder area, and they provide the greatest protection and separation from motorists. The next two bicycle facilities, the protected bike lane and the bike lane, are somewhat similar in that they make it very clear to motorists that they should expect to see bicyclists in the area and that those bicyclists are usually provided a five-foot wide lane with a two-foot wide buffer from motorists, ideally where conditions are appropriate. We would recommend some sort of roadway treatment, which provides a physical separation such as a flex post curbing or even some sort of like reflector. Then we have just the paved shoulder, where there's no particular markings on the roadway. Usually, you'll see some signage in the area to share the road, but that area is shared with stopping motorists, emergency stopping. And lastly, we have the shared lane marking or the shero, which is indicated by a bike icon and a Chevron arrow, which is marked on the roadway advising motorists that bicyclists may be present, and also indicates to the bicyclist where they should position themselves on the road. So design considerations. We started by identifying key origins and destinations in the Dunkirk and Prince Frederick Town Centers that we'd like to see some more connectivity to neighborhood shopping centers, schools, community centers, parks, churches, and other amenities. The intent there, from there, was to connect the dots and to design bicycle and pedestrian facilities that are feasible for the existing infrastructure. So the major factors that were taken into consideration during the preliminary design process were traffic speed and volume, available public right-of-ways, placement of utilities, stormwater management, and other potential obstructions, is it existing driveways, street crossings, and the topography of the area. And I'm just going to step back for a second and talk about the road classification design standards, and for all intents and purposes, this is not my forte, but necessary to discuss real briefly. So, chapter 104 of the Calvert County Code, which is the Road and Site Development Ordinance, the purpose of it is to establish regulations and criteria for planning, construction, improvement, reconstruction of our roadways, including sidewalks, our streetscapes. The, and in this ordinance, there are roadway classifications that classify our roadways according to their intended usage and the projected traffic capacity. So this ordinance was something that we looked into during the study to determine how the county is currently classifying our roadways in those areas and what standards are currently being used for bicycle facilities and roadway treatments. So as we dove into the roadway ordinance, this document then pointed us to the Calvert County Construction Standards for Road, Streets, and Incidental Structures. I believe this was adopted in 2018. This document provides construction standards to engineering personnel, contractors, and developers, a catalog of standards for roads constructed on our county-owned roadways. Currently, most of those roadway classification standard typical sections do not provide specifications for bicycle facilities. So on the bottom of the screen, you'll just see an existing roadway standard detail for minor residential collector roadway classification. And then we included a potential proposed detail for the same type of roadway, showing a five-foot bike lane, and that's just to show you a comparison of what we are potentially looking for guidance to work towards. So the BikeWay final report includes recommendations for future amendments. And again, these are just recommendations in the report to the Calvert County Road and Site Development Ordinance, as well as the construction standards that we just saw in the last two slides. These recommendations would be only applicable to new or significantly altered roadways. Another recommendation in the report is to include roadway classification plans in each of our updated Town Center master plans to include the types of bicycle and pedestrian facilities we'd like to see and wear. And for this recommendation, we really are in a good place, a good position, as we're currently in the process of updating the Prince Frederick and Dunkirk master plans with the five to follow. Another recommendation is for new development. The final report recommends less generalized requirements for bicycle parking and more regulatory language to meet the roadway classification standards as we include them into our master plans and potentially look to update our Road and Site Development Ordinance. And finally, storm grain, storm drain grate, excuse me. The report recommends updating the storm drain grate standards in the Calvert County Road and Site Development Ordinance to be more bicycle-compatible, as currently the standard spacing between the parallel bars poses a hazard to bike tires. And again, these are just recommendations from the final report. And this was just after researching, we saw some deficiencies in areas that we feel like we could further investigate.
Mary Beth, when you go through this, because you know, remember when we had sidewalks in Solomons, can you just look for anything that jumps off the page that's kind of silly? Like, remember when we had the stormwater management problem, and then they forced us to go by their guidelines, and then we ended up hiring a full-time landscaper-type thing? You know what I mean? They had to contract that out or something, you know what I mean? Can you just?
Yeah, I certainly will take that into consideration as we're proposing these changes.
I learned my lesson on when they give you money for that, there's fleas with that dog, so just, there's nothing hidden.
Sure.
Thank you.
So, let's jump into Dunkirk. Our intended BikeWay's network goal is to connect the two parks up in the Dunkirk area, the Dunkirk District Park and the Ward Farm Park, connect to adjacent neighborhoods and shopping centers safely. So first in the report, it recommends reducing Town Center Boulevard and Dunkirk Way to a one lane in each direction with a shared center lane, turn lane, and add either a protected bicycle lane or on-street bike lane to the roadway. Currently, there are two lanes in each direction with no shoulders, but they do have the sidewalks there.
So I do have a question about that. So why, when we having problems moving vehicles in and out, we're reducing lanes? Isn't that going to cause more of a disruption than helping?
You think there's, there's trouble with traffic in that area?
There's already traffic congestion in that area.
It's all congestion getting vehicles in and out, and now we're going to reduce it by a lane on each side? Just a question, you know, reducing, I agree with the lanes and we need bike lanes, but not reducing, taking out a lane.
Sure. So reducing is always the cheaper of the, you know, more so than expanding? And this is internal to the, the majority of this is internal to the development of Calvert Gateways. So while there may be trouble getting in and out of there, I don't think there's problems getting around once you're on site through Town Center Boulevard.
Okay.
I have a question. Is there enough room to safely put bike lanes in? Because in your chart, of course, I'm leaning in Dunkirk and Prince Frederick towards the top two, the safest.
Sure.
Are we able to do that, or will the roads accommodate that much attention to bike lanes?
Well, I think that's, this is truly just a feasibility study, and these are kind of seeing where are their options to connect these, these areas. These are recommendations for potential treatments. And it did do a very preliminary, high-level cost breakdown of things that may or may not need to take place to make these things happen. But like Mary Beth, Mary Beth said, that a lot of them were the cheapest way to do them. That's kind of what we asked for, so. And I do think the cheaper or the safer, you know, with the separation, would probably most likely require property acquisition, and I don't think it can be accommodated within the existing right-of-ways.
That's what I saw.
Yeah.
And normally, that's the killer, you know, everybody, you know, I'll get calls all the time. the time, "We need sidewalks here, sidewalks there." I'm like, "You can't just put them in, somebody has to sell you that property," and if you need four spots and only three are available, kills the whole project. It's just not a very simple thing.
No, it's not. And another thing with sidewalks is a lot of people think we put a sidewalk in that's not intended for bicyclists, and we are hearing a lot more from the public that they'd like to see more bicycle facilities. So, that was truly just the intent of the study, is to see where we could possibly put them and how. And I will say, we did a, kind of like a driving tour in these areas, and both behind the Dunkirk Way and Apple Way, they're very wide lanes. So, that would be Calvert County standard lanes versus what MDOT is technically requiring, so it's definitely something that we would, are asking for direction, kind of to look into.
Would they analyze during like rush hour and everything? You know, sometimes we would get some of these analytics, and they'd just take a snapshot of a 24-hour period, but that area is moving and grooving, boy, during rush hour. I mean, that is, so.
And so, what Jessica was just specifically talking about is if the lanes exceed the requirement for the width, that's an opportunity that we already have within the right of way. We have this area, if we're able to narrow the lanes, that's a cheaper option.
So, do they have to have the bike lane to get across Route 4? Because that's the only, that's the only two issues is, you're getting across at Dunkirk Park, and then you're getting across at Ward Road there. Why not let the bikes use the regular lane just to get across and then incorporate back into a bike lane? That way, it keeps you from having to minimize the, from two lanes down to one lane.
That's a possibility, yes.
Yeah, and again, these are recommendations, and that's, I'm here to just kind of present to you, what?
Oh, shoot the mess.
What did this grant money get? No, no, absolutely, no.
But that would all have to be studied for the design.
What did this grant get us? What does it, what does it present, and I, you know, bring it to you, and not all of these recommendations are recommendations that, you know, planning and zoning or DPW are 100% on board with.
And if they work.
And if they run overpass, right? Yeah, wherever they work, they work.
Yes. So, the third recommendation is to construct a shared use path between Dunkirk District Park and Ward Farm Park along Ward Road. That would require stream crossing and de-hermits, so that would be a pretty big project. Finally, the report recommends extending a pathway to allow pedestrian and bicycle access to and from Dunkirk Park to the shopping center along Ferry Lane Road by adding a pedestrian gate to the side or I guess rear, depending on how you're oriented. Currently, we are seeing a lot of foot traffic, particularly young adults and teenagers who leave the park by foot and either cross at the signal at Maryland 4 to go to McDonald's across the street, or they walk on the grass shoulder there on the side of Route 4 to get to Burger King or Wawa. So, the goal on that one would be to get the pedestrians or bicyclists off the main roadway safely.
Is there a crosswalk in that area, actually?
There, yes.
Is there?
Yes. We actually just recently got a request for an additional crosswalk at Ward Road as well, so that's something that we'll be working with MDOT to achieve as well. Do we have any other questions on Dunkirk? So, to the fun part, Prince Frederick. Prince Frederick, in the report, was broken up into two categories, short-term, I wouldn't say easier to implement, but maybe cheaper, and long-term projects. So, in the short-term category, again, we're trying to connect neighborhood shopping centers, schools, and our Main Street civic area. The first recommendation is to install bicycle lanes along Prince Frederick Boulevard during the planned resurfacing. This would connect the whole Aquatic Center down to Maryland 231.
So, if you convert a shoulder to a bike lane, does that mean it's no longer, you can't have a disabled car in the shoulder?
That's a good question. As far as not making it big to.
I'm sorry, I didn't need to call in an expert.
No, that's why he's here. That's a great question, JR.
Good morning, Commissioners, JR Kosko, Director Paula Berks. We would have to look into that option, and a lot of these changes, or I guess you say options that were presented during the study, are things we're going to have to look into and make sure that they're safe, both for the motorists and the pedestrian or the bicyclist. There will be some changes we have to make into accommodating to our current network system, but I believe the shoulder could still be used for, you know, a broke-down vehicle, and we wouldn't be using all of the shoulder either. A lot of our shoulders are somewhere between 10 to 12 feet wide on some of these roads. The lanes are 12-foot wide, so there's restructuring that could be done to narrow the lane down to more of an 11-foot lane for some, like say, Prince Frederick Boulevard, that would pick up a little bit of room for the shoulder, or we give additional room, wouldn't need it.
Because the law allows now, you can use a shoulder to pass a turning vehicle. I'm just wondering, you know, if you paint that little bike symbol and you call it a bike lane now, how does that impact other uses for the shoulder?
I think we'd have to look into different safety options, like some of the different options she had where you'd have those, I'll call them breakaway sticks, you know, to give some type of barrier between the motorists and the cyclist, to give a little more safety, especially in those areas where the shoulder could be used for a bypass lane when it shouldn't be.
But when you do that, you definitely take away the option of using the shoulder for other uses.
You do.
Well, and JR, I'm glad you brought that up too, because how do you remove snow with the breakaway sticks?
You break them away.
Unfortunately, that's.
Yeah, yeah.
You'd have to go out before the snow event and take them all up, or they'll end up getting taken up with the snow.
Yeah.
It's very difficult to move farm equipment with sticks there as well.
Sticks and guardrails.
Again, that's only one of the options we're separating.
You're very good at this, Jessica. You've learned already.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, JR.
Thank you.
I mean, you see on Route 24 where there's a bike lane, and in my opinion, not designed very well. It moves from one side of the shoulder, say, shoulder bike lane, to another side, and it's actually, it's also a travel lane, so I didn't want to answer your question, but obviously, it's on a travel lane and/or a shoulder or a turn lane, excuse me, so. The second recommendation would be to construct a shared use path or some sort of treatment to the roadway on Dares Beach Road from Maryland 24 to Calvert Elementary School. This could be utilized by incoming development that would be occurring in the next several years and bring you up past Calvert High School near the existing community center in that area. And lastly, for the short-term project recommendations, they are recommending we upgrade signage and markings and install decorative bicycle racks. There's a picture later in the presentation as an example that really stands out to create a bicycle awareness zone along Main Street in the Old Town sub area of Prince Frederick. Moving along to the long-term projects for Prince Frederick, many of these recommendations and concepts are based on future constructed roadways. The first recommendation is for Fox Run Boulevard, and remember, this was done in 2020, was began in 2021. So, when connect, the recommendation is, when connecting the two existing segments, it's recommended to install a shared use pathway and retrofit the existing segments or at a minimum put some sort of on-road bike lane along that roadway. Number two shows Chesapeake Boulevard. When or if that roadway is extended to the north and west, it is recommended that we include a shared use path, or again, at minimum, an on-road bike lane. The third recommendation is on Maryland 231, recommending that while MDOT is performing the widening on 231, that we, the county, advocate for BikeWay facilities along that roadway down to the College of Southern Maryland. And the next recommendation did not make its way onto the slides, I apologize, but it is indicated by the number four on the map and is based on another potential future roadway segment, which is advocated for in the current Prince Frederick Town Center Master Plan. This would be the future extension of West Dares Beach Road, which would extend to the subdivisions surrounding the College of Southern Maryland. The extension is recommended to include a shared use path, and during that time, it is recommended that we retrofit the existing segment of Dares Beach Road to have some sort of bicycle facility. Number five on the map should go hand-in-hand with the Chesapeake Boulevard Road Construction Project. If and when that takes place, it is recommended that bicycle facility be installed along the north side of Stokely Road to Prince Frederick Boulevard to meet up with what we hope to be an already improved roadway. And lastly, it is recommended that during the development of Armory Square, bicycle facilities be included on those roadway improvements. So, essentially, again, many of these long-term projects are continuations of connections to complete a BikeWay network in Prince Frederick, assuming we implement some or most of the previous improvements. There's our little decorative bike, I guess, parking that was included in the plan, something that kind of sticks out. So, first, I'm here today, again, just to present the findings of the study, explain how the grant was, how we went about the study, and also, we are looking for a direction to begin considerations into future potential amendments to the Calvert County Road and Site Development Ordinance that could assist in implementing the proposed future projects. I'm also here to answer any questions, see if any of the projects stuck out to you guys.
Do you have a way to measure how much bike traffic we have? Have you been able to do that?
I'm sure that there is a way to do it. I will say that we did get our.
Wasn't part of the feasibility study to see how much there is?
No, though, what we kind of went off of was the public input during the comprehensive plan, the Dunkirk draft and the Prince Frederick draft, and a lot of it was, we'd like to see some more bike facilities, pedestrian facilities within the town centers.
Yeah, it comes up in all the comp plan discussions and the master plans. I was just wondering if we had a way to measure how much there is, just wondered.
I will say, we recently received our, I believe it was 2021, traffic safety data from MDOT, and all of our numbers are going down as far as crashes and trending downwards, except for bicycle and pedestrians.
Until this year.
We're having more pedestrian and bicycle crashes than car crashes?
No, no, they're all different categories, but everything else is trending downwards, except our bicycle and pedestrian injuries and deaths appear to be on the upward trend.
Okay.
That doesn't answer the question, it's just, to me, that speaks to me saying, okay, well, maybe we have more on the roadway than in previous years, and again, this is 2021 data.
While you're talking, I was trying to think of a best example of a bike lane in Calvert County. I guess Cox Road between the two sections of Marley Ron, it's probably, to me, the one that stands out the most. Are there other roadways like that in the county that have designated bike lanes? JR?
I don't believe there's any roads that are county-owned.
And you are?
Oh, sorry, JR Kosko, Director Paula Berks. I don't believe there's any county-owned roads other than Cox Road that has a designated bike lane such as that, that's outside the town center. There's some within the town center that are state-run, like Route 4 has a designated bike lane. There's wide shoulders on a few of the roads, but that's about it.
A lot of work to do.
For sure. Any other questions? Discussion? Motion? Jessica did all this work, she's looking for some direction.
Even more work to do.
Mr. President, just make a motion to move to approve of the feasibility study and come back with the findings.
Second?
I have a motion in a second that we direct staff to begin considering future amendments to the Calvert County Road and Site Design Ordinances and other documents that might implement the findings and recommendations of the Dunkirk and Prince Frederick Feasibility Studies Final Report. That's what you said, right?
Exactly, to the T.
I'm just paraphrasing.
Yes, that's right.
Any discussion on that motion? Hearing no, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion raised. Thank you, ladies.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's good, I'm paraphrasing.
Just want to catch all of it.
You know, don't leave nothing out.
I believe that brings us to public comment. Mr. County Attorney?
Thank you, sir. The Board adopted resolution in 1989 intending to maintain the order and decorum of the governmental process. Copy is found here to my right. The Ethics Commission has asked that we remind speakers of public comment that lobbyists include those who seek to influence public policy, and lobbyists must register in advance. By Resolution 51-20, any individual or the appointed spokesperson for a group is welcome to address the Board of County Commissioners on any matter germane to the business of county government. Persons addressing the Board shall not be permitted to make statements or remarks that concern only private activities, lifestyles, or beliefs of others unrelated to the business of the Board of County Commissioners or the professional duties and performance of its employees or the employees of its elected officials. Floor has been open for public comment, first from persons in the meeting room, maybe begin making their way to the microphone, then those joining virtually. I see we have one virtual participant who's already raised his hand. Is there anyone in the meeting room? Okay, Mr. Cormier, if you please identify yourself for the record, and whether speaking as an individual or as the designated representative of a group.
Hi, good afternoon, Commissioners. My name's Joe Cormier, and I'm going to speak on behalf of myself today. I just want to welcome everybody back to the school year and encourage all parents and guardians to be involved in your kid's school, whether it's with the PTA, the ETO, any of the various clubs or committees, you know, just be involved every day, you know, check those grades every day, check what's in your kids' backpacks, have those conversations that might be difficult, talk about the vaping and the drugs and the bullying, have those conversations, you know, while you're driving your kids home from cross-country. Go to sporting events, be a positive influence, mentor, volunteer, just be involved in the community. Other than that, I appreciate you guys, thank you for voting on the sprinklers for the Northern Community Center. It's very important for our seniors up there in my end of the county, and I appreciate you. Thank you so much, have a great day.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That was the only speaker.
Thank you. That brings us to Commissioner Reports. Commissioner Cox?
Thank you, Mr. President. Please keep in your prayers the Ward family and the Willie family for passing of family members. Two weeks ago, I did attend Mako with my fellow commissioners, and we learned a lot down there in Ocean City. I did attend the Volunteer Appreciation Day for all our volunteers, so I thank the volunteers each and every day for what they do for this community. We did have a water and sewer meeting the other night on resolution, and we do have one more coming up, so check out that date and please attend. Christ Church had a jousting tournament this weekend, which was well-attended, and this weekend, I celebrated our anniversary, and we got Labor Day weekend coming up, so have a safe and happy Labor Day weekend. Thank you.
Happy anniversary.
Thank you.
Yes, happy anniversary.
Commissioner Ireland?
Attended the Tiki Grill ribbon cutting on August 10th. I understand the food there was delicious, some people from the county attended lunch there. On August 11th, Minnie Bowen passed away, which was her 100th birthday. Proclamation was going to be read on August 13th at the church, however, it ended up being read at her funeral on August 23rd. Ocean City, as Commissioner Cox said for Mako, I guess one of the things I really took away from there is we share a lot of the same problems as most of the rural counties in Maryland. Blueprint presents significant challenge for all the counties and was always a topic no matter, it seemed like wherever you went. Commissioner Hansel Philis on that, his commissioner report, I'm sure. We met with the Secretary of Transportation, we tried to get him to put the new Thomas Johnson Bridge at the top of his list. I don't believe it's going to happen though, unfortunately.
Really? You're psychic.
Crystal Falls is working pretty good.
Right, right. And also attended the Volunteer Appreciation Day on August 19th, August 22nd. We had 4H meeting, the kids are gearing up for the fair, finishing up their livestock projects. September 30th, there's a livestock auction at the fairgrounds. If you've never been, it's pretty entertaining. Yeah, bring you. Yeah, bring your checkbook, absolutely. First year in 21 years, we didn't have a child in the school system.
As a celebration.
But I do wish every parent and their kids an excellent and safe school year. We met with the Secretary of Commerce at the Rod and Reel, we toured Kelly Generator, we also toured Mullies Brewery and Jeff Marine, it was actually a fun day, and there is a hospice hog this year, the hospice hog's name is Holly.
Ooh.
Holly the hog.
If we could get plenty of people to bring their checkbooks, I think we could raise a lot of money for, is it hospice to the Chesapeake now, which was Calver Hospice? So, that's all I have.
Thank you. Commissioner Rosso?
I attended Mako as well, from the 15th to the 18th. The 19th, I attended Solomon's Dragon Boat Races, I'm read a proclamation there. I attended volunteer appreciation the same day at the fairgrounds. 22nd, we met with the Commerce Secretary and the Roundtable and toured some businesses in Calver County, I only toured Rod and Reel. That evening, I went to zoning 101 and Prince Frederick Library, Keep Calver Country, put that on, and then the 26th, the jousting tournament, we've always wanted to go to it and decided to go this year, met a lot of people there, it was a fun event. Also, I just want to bring to your attention again that one of our citizens, Terry Gibson, approached us at a crab feast, he felt he had died, and through the good works of our Calver Career EMS, EMT Lauren Schubert, paramedic Danielle Sullivan, and volunteer paramedic Eric Marsh, he is alive and kicking now because of their fast response and their expertise and making sure he lived a few more years, so thank you to them.
Thank you. Commissioner Hart?
Just want to wish everybody a safe and happy Labor Day with coming up. That's all I'm stressed about.
Man, I'm going to take your time.
There you go.
So, we haven't met for two weeks, so, and we did, the first thing we did after our break was we all went to Mako, and generally, when you tell people you're going to a conference at Ocean City in August, they say, yeah, right, but my feet never touched the sand, the swimming pool, or the boardwalk. I mean, you're in meetings all day long and seminars, and we learn a lot, you know, people say, well, blah blah, but we do, and we made some good contacts, got some, maybe some heads up for some grants and helped save the county some money, but we always learn something there, and, you know, it's always a worthwhile venture. So, I want to thank my fellow Commissioners for attending. Attended the Volunteer Appreciation Day on, that was the Saturday we came home from Mako, and, you know, we just can't say enough about our volunteers that we have here in Calver County, firing EMS, you know, they're getting supplemented with some career EMS now, but we have a wonderful volunteer system here in Calver County that most people don't even realize they're volunteers, they think they're all being paid, and as Commissioner Rosso said, Terry Gibson, a friend of mine, came up to me Saturday, and he said, you know I died, and I thought, it's not very often you talk to a dead man, but then he relayed the story that had happened to him, and he was greatly appreciated, appreciated the care that he got from our volunteers unpaid EMS system that brought him back to life. So, we took a little time this morning during staff to recognize those medics and thank them for their service. We also, as Commissioner Ireland mentioned, last Tuesday, we didn't meet because the Secretary of Commerce, the Maryland State Secretary of Commerce, came down for a tour of Calver County. Want to thank Department of Economic Development for putting together a great tour. We started at the Rod and Reel. Those of you that have been to Chesapeake Beach, you know, have seen the expansion that's going on there at the Rod and Reel, they are finally, they're now working on the old restaurant building, they tore that down, putting up the new building, and they're going to hopefully break ground on that, they said in early '25 or the end of '24, so we all look forward to that. And as Commissioner Ireland said, we toured some local businesses, Secretary of Commerce got a good taste of Calver County and, you know, who we are, and offered up some help, so we look forward to working together with the Department of Commerce and bringing some business and supporting the businesses that we have. We also today, in our, you saw earlier, we recognized some young students from the Career Center that were did outstanding in the state skills competition in Maryland, one firefighter and two EMS students, and, you know, we talked about the Career Center at Calver, it's such a great opportunity for students to get on a career path, they don't have any college debt, get jobs right out of school, very good-paying jobs. Unfortunately, the Career Center is, has more applicants than they have room for, and they're in a lottery system now to get in, it's very unfortunate that we have students that are denied that opportunity. We should probably try to work together with the school system to see how we can expand the opportunities for the Career Center, so don't want to see those children not get that opportunity. I attended the Sportsman's Club Crab Feast on Saturday evening with Commissioner Rosso, and they were the best crabs I've had in years, want to thank the Sportsman's Club.
I'll pass that along.
You know, I hate to plug them, but I guess I'm going to have to, for what you pay and what you get, it's a good deal, you know, it's all you can eat, and as I said, the crabs were outstanding Saturday, so I think the next event is, they're going to Oyster's, right? Is there another crab event?
Yes.
Yeah, so, if you're interested, you should check out the Calver Sportsman's Club. Also, want to plug Farm Bureau's having a barbecue to raise money for scholarships at Spider Hall Farm on September the 14th, I believe, huh?
Sixteenth.
Sixteenth, Saturday 16th, you can get tickets somewhere. If you Google Calver County Farm Bureau, I'm sure it's on their website, how you can get tickets. I have mine, so, and also, we are not going to meet next week because of Labor Day, but on September the 12th, we're going to do a groundbreaking for a new county administration building, it's going to be the beginning of a great, great, great thing.
At 2:00 PM.
At 2:00 PM. Other than this courthouse, it's probably the only administration building Calver County's ever built, I would think, so, yeah. They've been pushing us for the last four or five years to get out of this courthouse because the court system needs more room, so we finally have pulled that trigger, and I think that job, if it stays on track, should be done late '24, early 2015, so we're looking forward to that ribbon cutting and getting our staff all back together in one building, so it's going to be a great opportunity. Just want to remind everybody about, school started yesterday, make sure you're careful out here, the school buses are running up and down the road, the kids, you know, are excited, some of them, and we're going to make sure to keep them safe. Planning the zoning, doing the zoning ordinance update, if, please go to the website and get all the current information. I think we've got a public water and sewer meeting coming up, is that this Thursday? Something's this Thursday.
September 12th.
Water and Sewer's on September the 12th?
Yes.
I don't know when the next, if, go on the website for the zoning ordinance update schedule. We also gave a proclamation earlier today on being prepared, it's, they're saying we're going to have a busy September and October for storms, so make sure you're prepared, especially those of you that live in low-lying areas that have flooding concerns, just pay attention, you can go to our website, it'll give you those current updated information that we have. Phew, that's what happens when you take a two-week break. Just, and that concludes my report, just want to wish everybody a very happy and safe Labor Day.
Absolutely.
And we won't see you next Tuesday. Commissioner Hart, you have a motion for me?
Yes, sir. I move to recess to executive session pursuant to General Provisions Article Section 3-305B1I, B3, B7, B8, and B10-2 to discuss the appointment, assignment, removal, resignation, or performance evaluation of appointees or officials over whom the Board has jurisdiction. Consider the acquisition of real property for public purpose and manage directly related there too. Consult with counsel to obtain legal advice. Consult with staff consultants or other individuals about pending or potential litigation and discuss the development and implementation of emergency plans.
Second.
I have motion in second that we move into executive session, any discussion on that motion, hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Everyone have a great day and a happy Labor Day.
Thank you.